Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, Victorville Water District and the City Council, the City of Victorville. The first item on the agenda is our public comment. Do you have any public comment, cards? That will move into our agenda item number two, which is the workshop to discuss and take possible action on the 2011-2012 fiscal year budget for all of the agencies. And with that, Mr. Cox.
The Southern Council discussed the process of reviewing the proposed budgets for the 2011-2012 fiscal year. This is an attempt to bring the council very well up to date on where we are at financially and also what the projections are for the coming year. As you already know, there has been presentations made that indicate that we still have a shortfall that we are going to be making up. We don't intend that today is going to be the answer because after we go through, after Doug makes the presentations and presentations made by the departments, I'm sure there's going to be questions by the city council, but also in addition, there will probably be policy issues to discuss. And that'll give us the ability then to take that information and move to step two. One of the things that I want to answer right away, we've been besieged with employees and I know their concern. How many employees are going to be laid off and when the layoffs are going to occur? At that point, we do not know because we do not know what services may or may not be cut and we're still looking at refining these figures, but this is the first step. So that without any doubt, there will be cuts for the number of employees. At the present time, we have several employees who are leaving because of a layoff, volunteer layoff, seeking employment elsewhere in retirement. And at the appropriate time, we'll be finalizing those numbers also. At this point in time, I'd like to turn this over to Doug Roberts and his staff to put together this presentation for the mayor and council.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. We had hoped to have a bit more budget done at this point in time to give you a full budget presentation, including all of the schedules and everything, but we're not quite to that point yet. We are at a point, however, that we need some policy direction from the city council. And so the purpose of this meeting is to go over, in a general sense, where we are on the budget at this point and to hear from department heads on what the proposed cuts, potential cuts, what impact it would have to their individual departments, and then seek council direction on several key items, like I said just a moment ago. So you're not going to be asked to approve a budget at this point, just to provide that direction on your priorities. I did a memorandum. Literally, we finished it up late this morning and that is on the diap. I'm not going to read it to you, but for the benefit of yourselves, to get everybody up to speed and for members of the audience, I do want to go over several of the key points in the memo. I do also want to mention that we do have quite a few city staff members here, both ones that participated in crafting the budget and then also folks that are just interested in exactly what's happening. City staff have been up to midpoint of those steps. During that fiscal year, or in order to get a budget that fiscal year, we cut approximately $10 million across the board, coming from employee salaries and benefits of a long variety, actually. All the employees know what those were. And ultimately, nearly 100 employees were either laid off or demoted in lieu of layoffs. The budget that year relied on using about $3.4 million of the reserves that we had on hand at that point. That was the first step down. This fiscal year's budget, in order to get the direction from council on how much of that reserve, the remaining reserve to use, which was at that point probably in the $7 million range, staff proposed a reserve policy. And that policy is effectively has a floor of about 5% of the general fund, a goal of 15%, but a floor of 5%. So the reserve was used to that level, about $4.7 million was used this year in order to balance the budget. And then an additional $3 million or so was cut this fiscal year, which resulted in an additional 20 or so layoffs, not counting voluntary layoffs in any of those numbers. At this point in time, we're estimating about $2.2 million in reserves left as of June 30, 2011, hoping that will be just a little bit higher, making sure that our departments don't spend anything that they don't absolutely have to between now and June 30th. And because of that, and because we have a budget gap going into next year in the neighborhood of five to six million dollars, additional cuts are necessary. If we were to cut across the board, those cuts would be right at 8% was the estimate going into the budget, and that's what we asked department heads to come up with, was an estimated 8% cut to each department. Some divisions, some departments don't have the capacity to cut 8%, something like risk management, let's say, off the top of my head, is mostly contracts for insurance, various insurances, and those simply can't be cut arbitrarily. If we have less employees, there is some reduction there, but just across the board, you can't make those cuts. We're not unique. Other cities are facing this as well. I highlighted just a few. In Redlands, they're looking at 81 jobs being eliminated, including 10 sworn police officers. Costa Mesa issued layoff notices to 213 employees, including some of the firefighters. And then Merced, it was just announced, is considering 64 layoffs, including 29 sworn officers and 12 firefighters. In the past, the Victorville City Council has maintained a support of public safety. And over the last four fiscal years, the percent of general fund usage by public safety has gone from 43% to 64% this current fiscal year. It's not because public safety has been increasing, it's been mostly maintained, although the first couple of years there were some increases, but it's been mostly maintained as the status quo while other departments have reduced. So at mid-year, there was an estimate of about 75% public safety in the next year's budget, but due to the reversal on the vote on filling those police officer positions, that went back down to roughly 64% or so. If the city council chooses to cut across the board, including public safety, then the percent of general fund would remain roughly the same, 64-65%. If ultimately, the city council chooses to maintain public safety as its current levels, it would, that percentage would rise to approximately 70%. Revenues right now are projected to be about $45 million. Those have been mostly flat. We have had a little bit of a bump in sales tax, but it's been offset by property tax and then some. So the, some of the key issues that we would like some direction on is the use of reserves, also budget priorities. What are your budget priorities of this new council? Cost of living adjustments and then the potential for more across-the-board cuts to all employees. As I mentioned earlier, the current reserve policy has a floor of 5%. In order to adhere to that policy, then none of that estimated $2.2 million in remaining reserves could be used. Staff is actually recommending a suspension of that policy in order to continue these steps down, trying to maintain service levels as high as possible. If the council decides to give that direction to staff, then if there's additional shortfall, if we don't make up that $2.2 million over the next 12 months in either additional revenues or a cut in expenditures, there would not be any reserves left and we would have to for 12, 13 fiscal year, make a hard cut down to that absolute revenue number. We're hopeful that the economy is showing signs of improvement. So to this end, department heads were asked to prepare two different budgets, one being a cut of 8% and one being a cut of approximately 29%. That 29% number comes from the amount that the remaining departments would have to cut if the direction from the council, as it has been in previous years, is to not make any cuts to public safety. So that's what you'll hear from the department heads today is the effects of those either 8% or 29% cuts. The police and fire were not asked to cut up to 29%. There was a bit of a mix up in a email that I sent out that made it confusing, but they've only been asked to come up with an 8% cut, not knowing one way or the other if this current city council is, has an appetite to cut public safety or not. We wanted to present you with options. The totals are presented on a department by department basis, but they're based on division by division, all the way down to account line items. We're hoping that after getting the priorities from the council, that within the next few weeks, we can put together a final draft budget to come back and have a more in-depth discussion about every single line item, if that's your choice, or keep it a higher level, department by department or division by division. One thing to caution you is our employees over the last few years have taken several across-the-board cuts and our competitiveness from a salaries and benefits standpoint is slipping. We have furloughs implemented over a two-year period. Cafeteria plans have not been increased, the dollar amount that employees get have not been increased in over five years. Typically, employees received a cost of living adjustment beginning every July 1, based on the March-to-March CPI for the LA Orange Riverside County CPI and Consumer Price Index. Sorry, so I knew it was somewhere in there. Over the last, since the furloughs over the last, the next two fiscal years, the net total of that cost of living or that CPI is about 0.9%. So it hasn't been a tremendous impact not giving that to the employees. This year, however, it just came out, the March-to-March CPI was 3%. So effectively, over the last couple of years, the cost of living has raised a total of 3.9%. And so we're seeking direction from the council on whether or not to consider awarding a cost of living adjustment to employees at this time. It has been several years since one has been given. The other issue that we are facing is increase to the cost of benefits. Our current, two current benefit providers, thus far, we're in negotiations with them and the cost of benefits increases are anywhere from 12% to 19%. Over the last few years, all of those benefit increases have been borne by employees with the city not increasing those cafeteria plan benefits. We'd like direction from the council on whether to consider increases to those benefits. All these issues are difficult, difficult to balance. As we're looking at cutting, meaning more layoffs, potentially increasing pay or increasing benefits, would necessarily result in additional layoffs. But we want the council to have all the information that you need in order to wrestle with these issues and hopefully provide your priority direction at the end of this meeting. Your employees are doing more with less and getting paid less to do it. And I felt it important that you know that. Governor Brown has proposed a pension reform platform. I think it was called a Ten-Tenant or something or other plan. I didn't count 10. But one of the key issues that he is proposing is to actually pass a law or have the legislature pass a law that would prohibit government agencies from paying the quote employee share of their purse, of their retirement costs. Currently, Victorville picks up 100% of that employee share and staff is not recommending that that change at this time. However, just for informational purposes, if the governor's proposal were to pass, as it's currently written, it would be a savings of approximately $700,000 to the general fund and $900,000 to other funds. Again, we're not attempting to, we're not asking you to approve or not approve that methodology, but thought it might be informational for you as you go through your budget deliberations. Department heads who have enterprise functions or who are overseeing other governmental agencies have been asked to prepare budgets based on no internal borrowing and based on no assistance from the general fund. There still is some work to do in a couple of our enterprise areas, one's wastewater, BMO's and also golf, golf specifically. I've talked with our contractor for golf and informed them that there will be no, effectively no dollars available from the general fund to subsidize golf. So they need to come up with a plan that will have golf paper itself into the future. That isn't the direction that I've received, but just knowing the level of cuts that this council is faced with having to make, I thought it unrealistic to even consider having a subsidy from the general fund to golf at this point. Waiting for hard dollars, but their initial indication is that they believe that they can, they can accomplish that, that. There will be some cuts to golf, however. Specifically, what I'd like to do, unless there are questions from a general sense on the overall budget, is I'd like to go through and have each of the department heads talk about what the cuts that are currently in their budgets, their proposed budgets would mean to services, so that you get the full knowledge of the decisions and the impacts that you're considering today. I'll start with myself. I am also the department head for administrative services, formerly three departments, HR, IT and finance. And although we have worked as a department on cuts and we are prepared to make the necessary cuts, because so many of us have been focused on the overall city budget, myself included, I don't have a detailed list of cuts the way the other department heads have for you today, but I can tell you that the more that we cut, it doesn't affect external customers that are walking into city hall much, but it does affect our internal customers, those employees that are relying on HR staff to help them with benefits, that are relying on finance staff to process payments and things, and relying on information technology staff to make sure that their computers and networks and programs that they use to get their jobs done are up and working. So we would lose some efficiency, obviously, if we cut in those areas, but we are prepared to make those cuts. It's a little bit difficult because we are implementing a new software program for all of our financials. Ultimately, it will likely be used for several other of the programs that we currently use throughout city hall. It is actually being done concurrently with the budget and our go-live date is July 5. That will take what right now is a tremendous paperwork load on departments and make most of it electronic, to the point that you can make a purchase electronically, you can approve the purchase as a department head electronically, when you get an invoice, you can receive it electronically, you can approve that invoice electronically, and the vendor could even get paid electronically without having to cut a paper check. That will have an effect on the amount of staff that we need to get all of those things done. So it's difficult at this point to put an estimate on where we might lose some time on those functions, but there would be delays on our internal services. If you would look at page, the pages aren't numbered, but the very first spreadsheet page on the general fund, this is what I want to focus on, these departments, because this is where our biggest need is, and then eventually get into the next few pages, which are more of our enterprise and other governmental functions. With that, actually, I would like to start with our city manager budget and actually I asked Carol Lee to kind of head that up, and although I know normally you don't make presentations to the council, Carol Lee, if you could give a flavor of what could be expected under the two different scenarios as far as cuts. Our city manager budget was reduced because of some attrition when our PIO left. We naturally had some attrition there and some savings in salaries and we are not looking to fill that position. Cliff, Carol Lee.
Primarily, first of all, under the 8% reduction in the budget, as far as the records management function is concerned, since the city clerk's office is the custodian of records for the city and responsible for responding not only to public records requests, subpoenas, and of course, we've had the various investigations that have been ongoing, that city clerk's office has been heavily involved in providing the information for those requests. We also, through our trustees document imaging system, are, we have development that is tied into that system for their permitting process, code enforcement, their case files, engineering has come on board and so a lot of things that we normally would have done that was paper-based in the past is now done electronically through the imaging system. Also, the cashiers, that is another function where when they have somebody at the counter with the document imaging system, they have all of that information at hand in front of them. So it avoids them having to go and retrieve paper documents when they have customers at the counter. We've just been in the process of really trying to get city hall automated and establishing a records management program citywide, bringing departments on board. So the primary impact to us would be if we had a reduction in those services, particularly development comes to mind because they virtually come to a shutdown if they don't have access to those systems. We just did experience a failure just recently with the document imaging system and it literally put them out of business. They had to turn people away at the counter. So that is, with the 8% reduction, that would be the primary function that's affected for us. A 29% reduction would actually result in eliminating another position, which would be public information clerk, which is our receptionist. That would result in having to go to an automated switchboard, basically, and we wouldn't have anybody at the front to direct customers at city hall. So those are the, where we would primarily be affected.
Thanks, Carol Lee. I did skip over the city council. I'm going to kind of go in order here. No cuts have been made to the city council's budget. It's almost entirely payroll for your stipend and benefits. There are a couple of other fairly small items in there, but it's mostly effectively your payroll and benefits. Next on this list, actually-
I take it goes without saying, however, to skipping over that, at the present time, the council is very much aware of what's in the council budget. They'll be looking at that, but last year was the first year that we effectively canceled all travel, all everything but the council. There were some things that were necessary, but very, very few expenditures. And the public is probably not aware that the city council continued to participate in activities that required the council, but in all instances outside the city, it required them to reach into their pocket and pay if they wanted to attend certain functions that traditionally are city expenses because of city-related. And at the time of the budget, we'll go back through those again. I do know that there have been requests by other cities for council to be more active in relationships between cities, especially city-county, but this is one of the things that the council agreed on and setting the, a year ago, actually, two years ago when they agreed on it, to set the example, if the cuts were coming from the top down, is take the first cut at the council travel and travel benefits and expenses. The current budget doesn't show any additional cuts in that, but maintains those.
Next on the list is library services. Library services is included as part of the general fund, although it has its own funding source through property taxes and through interlibrary loans. The direction given to the department head in this instance was to have library services have no additional impact to the general fund, to only consider the property tax that the library receives as part of the library board of trustees you administer, and to also consider those other library revenues from interlibrary loans and there's a little bit of other expenses or other revenues from some rentals that they have of movies and things. So that budget actually has a zero impact on the general fund this year, or the coming year. I believe in this year's budget, there may be about a $30,000 to $40,000 subsidy from the general fund, but that would be eliminated for next year. Next on this list is actually administrative services, which I've already covered. Then next is the city attorney. Although this is quote city attorney, it is not just Green, DeBartowski and Kittenia. This is payments to attorneys who do work on behalf of essentially for the whole city, not based on just a single department. This account is also used to process the bills for the city attorney and for attorneys. As they come in, they're typically paid out of this account and then those bills are sent to the departments and as department heads indicate which account those, those accounts should be, or those services should be charged to, then the money is taken back out of this account. So this is, this account tends to float up and down as bills come in and go out through the departments. This year, we budgeted half a million dollars. We will be over that this year. We'll be coming back sometime before June 30th to, for an additional appropriation in that account. When the budget was developed, although there was discussion of forensic auditor at the time, and in fact, I think there had just recently been approved to hire a forensic auditor, we had really no knowledge of what that was going to entail from our city attorney. And additionally, at that time, we had no knowledge that the SEC was going to come in and make these enormous document requests. So there's been a tremendous amount of money spent on those two investigations, those two inquiries, and it turned out it's not a city attorney town, although we don't have any, necessarily any end date for either of those. We are hopeful that those will wrap up, at least for the most part, by the end of this fiscal year, and we can go back to just our regular bills that we would normally expect. Next up is our police department budget, actually. As I mentioned, they were not asked to come up with a 29% cut, but they were asked to try to get to an 8% cut so that the city council would know what that, what that might look like. I'm not sure who's going to give a presentation here.
Tom McMahon. Is that any better? There you go. Tom McMahon, for those of you that don't know me, I'm kind of stepping in and covering for Cliff today. But I think you did get a document that was prepared by Pam over at the station and with some different options. Currently, we still have the seven deputy vacancies as well as one SSS, which is a service specialist. But just from a historical perspective, 2010, 2011 police budget was right around $20 million. Of that, about $18 million was what we call the Schedule A or the Contract for Law Enforcement Services with the county. That included all of the deputy sheriffs, all the staffing that comes with it. With those vacancies, we were able to send credits back to the city, the county- With those vacancies, we were able to send credits back to the city, the county credits to the city for any of the vacancies that are both vacant, the seven deputies or folks that are on forty-eight, fifty. If they're injured, if they're off for more than two weeks, the city gets credits back. This year, so far, year to date, we've credited about one point five million dollars back to the city. If it stays on track for what it's doing now, it'll be about two point one million dollars by the end of the fiscal year. One of the per, they per, go ahead.
One point five million, should another number?
One point five million year to date, but we still have three months left.
Paid by the end of the year.
About two point one million in credits. That's not just the seven deputies and the one S S S, but, uh, there's a detective position that's vacant, he's off and a couple of other folks that are off, so you get credits for those as well. Some have been for an extended period of time, some have just been for a short period of time. And those come and go, people come back to work after they get better and then others go off and you get credits for them after they've been off for more than two weeks. This next year for, for eleven twelve, the schedule A, the, uh, contract for law enforcement services is anticipating about a five point three percent increase, which is just about nine hundred thousand dollars or so. That's just normal, uh, increases that occur every year. The average is six to seven percent annually is what the contract goes up. Variety of different things impact that, liability insurance, workman's comp insurance, pay raises or M O U increases for the employees. That is the worst case scenario at this point, five point three percent. It may go down. The, uh, C E O, Greg Deveraux, has been talking to the different employee unions, the safety employees benefit association, the safety, the deputy sheriffs, they may enter into negotiations with the county to waive raises or who knows exactly how it'll all shake out, but that will occur before the end of this fiscal year. That may also occur with the general employees, which is the S B P E A. They may or may not enter into negotiations with the C E O to modify their salaries. They waived their raises last year, the deputies took theirs. This coming year, for the next fiscal year, the deputies are due four percent raises, two, two percent raises, one in July, one in December. Not sure if they'll take those or not. Depending on how those negotiations go, that five point three percent increase that's projected for your next schedule A may be less than that.
So if they said theoretically, if they said, "We're not going to take any of those two, two, two pay raises and that's four percent off of the five point three," is that the way that works or what?
It's four percent off of the safety employees on your schedule A. You have seventy-one deputy sheriffs, ten detectives, ten sergeants and all that. It's, it's those folks that would be affected by that four percent decrease in salary that's projected for next year. It wouldn't be a four percent overall because there's dispatch services, cars and all of those things included in your schedule A as well. So it would just be four percent of those deputy sheriffs or safety employees. If the general employees, which are the S S S's office specialists and that type of thing, open up negotiations and they waive their M O U increases, then those, that number will go down as well. To what degree, it depends on how the negotiations go. The hard costs with liability insurance, workman's comp insurance, those are just pass-throughs, understanding that the county cannot make any money, but they can't lose any money. So it, whatever it costs the county for those different things, and they just have to pass it on. They can't supplement different cities and they certainly can't make any money doing it. So, uh, the other thing to remember and, and for those of you that are new, the city's indemnified and they're contract law enforcement, so we kick the wrong door or we do something, the county's the one that's liable. So that's why you have that personal liability and bonding and all those insurances in there as well as workman's comp. If a guy gets injured on duty, he goes off, he's off for a year, you either get credits for it or you get the person replaced. So you don't have to eat that person. If you had your own police department, you'd have to eat it, so, or any other business, you'd have to carry that person. We will, we'll replace them or give you the money back, either one. So, worst case scenario at this point is a five point three percent increase, which is a little over nine hundred thousand dollars for the next fiscal year. But if we leave the same seven deputies and one S S S vacancy, as well as the anticipated credits consistent with what we've done this year, there should be no reason why we can't credit back the city about two point one million dollars again this year. So, two point one million dollars on top of a, or, or based on a twenty million dollar overall police budget is about a ten percent reduction. You'll see that that was the same amount last year as it would be this year. So if it needs to get any lower than that, we can just start adjusting personnel and you can take people off the schedule A and, and I can give you numbers for each person and what it costs. Hundred and fifty some thousand for a sergeant or whatever we choose to drop if that's the pleasure of the council. But as it stands now, we anticipate giving back to the city about two point one million dollars, similar to what we did last year, if we leave those same seven vacancies, pick the one S S S. Um, there is a detective that's off, has been off for long term. He'll probably fall off the books, he's out of time, he'll probably be medically retired here soon. At that point, when Cliff's back, they can have a discussion as to whether or not you want to fill that detective position or continue to leave it vacant. Right now, you're getting credits for it because it's not filled, but it's not technically a vacancy, it's still an occupied position, he's just off on, on medical leave. So, um, with that in mind, I'd be happy to answer any questions for you, but it looks like about a ten percent decrease from your overall twenty million dollar police budget, uh, similar to last year.
John, I've got a question, Doug, you may want to add to this. We're looking at the twenty-eleven budget of twenty thou, twenty million, hundred ninety-one thousand. Is that with or without the estimated credit?
Without.
Okay, so, that by the end of the year could be eighteen million.
Correct, correct.
So while it looks like in doing these comparisons that we're reducing our, our, uh, police cost, we're actually going to be increasing it slightly.
Increasing it slightly. Now, now, um, just as another matter of clarification and just some general information, the city buys deputy sheriffs and those, some of those deputy sheriffs work at the schools as S R Os. Well, the school district reimburses the city for the cost or a portion of the cost of those deputy sheriffs. Two of the S S S's that are on the schedule A or on the contract for law enforcement services, they're reimbursed or paid for by the red flex contract. So you'll see some of that money coming back and one of the deputy sheriffs, a portion of his salary is paid for because he's in the crime-free multi-housing program and it's reimbursed by a grant. So some of that money comes back to the city and it has last year as well and it will continue this year. But, but you'll see, um, about seven hundred and nine thousand dollars coming back from the school district, almost seven hundred and ten thousand, for the deputies that work at the schools. So when you look at that overall twenty million, if you get about two million dollars in credits, which we anticipate, and you get seven hundred and nine or seven hundred and ten thousand back from the schools, that reduces it some more, a hundred and thirty-three thousand from red flex to offset the cost of the S S S's, eighty-nine thousand from a grant to offset the deputy sheriff. Well, pretty soon you start dropping the city's burden much below that twenty million dollars.
Without reducing service.
Correct. Continuing with the same level of service that you have today, you'll, you'll actually see a decrease. That twenty million. Questions?
I have a comment if I could, Mr. Mayor Council. We, we talked a little bit about this earlier, uh, mostly as a question from me, but there have been, um, statements that as a result of being shorthanded, your overtime is climbing at a very rapid rate and therefore any savings is offset by overtime. Do you know at this point in time, uh, you know what the, uh, the credits have been to date and the projected credits, do you know the overtime to date and projected overtime and how does that affect your budget overall?
The budgeted overtime for, uh, two thousand eleven, twelve is about five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And, uh, and let me defer to Pam, that's about what you spent last year, about five hundred and seventy-five thousand? Okay. Five hundred and seventy-five thousand. The credits for just the seven deputy sheriffs and the one S S S is about one point two million. So it's, it's, uh, your overtime is about half of what you're getting for credits. Okay. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Uh, just kind of following down the list here, uh, next up actually would be, uh, fire administration. Could have, uh, our fire chief come down and talk about, uh, his budget. I guess your, uh, employees have concluded their negotiations with the, with the C E O?
Yes, they have. Actually, uh, you, did you, uh, send a copy of the memo that I sent you out to the council by any chance?
They've got it on the dais today, so, uh, if you go through the information, the Senate, so, uh, everyone's up to speed on it.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, city council staff, I'll kind of start, um, with the discussion of the budget and do a quick comparison. Um, fiscal year two thousand nine, two thousand ten saw a budget of thirteen million, six hundred and sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Um, at that point, in oh nine, ten, for the two thousand ten, two thousand eleven budget season, I actually, looking at the state and the economy of the city, undertook a pretty extensive review of our budget and actually started looking at ways that we could reduce our contract to actually help the city out. I've become very passionate about this, I'm very sensitive to the remainder of the city. I know it's a tough time. I, I generally really look at this as saving jobs in other portions and other departments and that's how I look at it. While maintaining, my goal is to maintain current levels of service. That's always been my goal. We don't need to add right now, we will in the future, but at least if we can maintain status quo, we'll be doing, we're busy, but we'll be doing okay. So with that in mind, back in, uh, two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, we worked real hard and we actually absorbed some positions, which is one of the nice things about county fire. At the time, we had a lot of open positions, so we absorbed several positions from staff out of fire prevention and we also absorbed a battalion chief position, which ended up saving the city, um, from the two thousand ten, eleven budget cycle, saved the city about seven hundred thousand dollars at that time. So we were real proud about that, uh, actually reduced that budget last year by about seven hundred thousand dollars. So for two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, my original goal and one of the things that I've been telling city manager is that, uh, I want to come in and at least bring you a status quo budget. I didn't want to increase it. My goal was to come in status quo. However, when I got the initial numbers back, um, for various reasons that I'll share with you here, it was extremely over what we were last year. So it was about eight hundred thousand dollars over last year. The good news is through some hard work, we've actually brought that back down to, um, where it's at today. For two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, you are looking at a budget of twelve million, nine hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars and three hundred, which is less than last year. So we actually came in this year better after a lot of hard work over the last three weeks to get this thing back down, uh, we're actually less than last year. So what you're looking at from the period two thousand nine to two thousand ten to today is a five point five percent reduction in the fire contract. So we actually are working real hard and will continue to do so, um, by looking at further ways to consolidate and those kinds of things. So, um, with that said, so the current budget, nine, twelve million, nine hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, which is five point five percent reduction from previous years. So saving about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars over the last couple of years. So our budget came in significantly higher this year initially due to same thing that, um, the sheriff's department was talking about. We had a increase, a major increase in workers' compensation and general retirement benefits. Um, we had a increase in our con fire dispatch charges. Um, the reason for that, as you'll see, as I kind of wrapped this up, I want to bring it back and give you a little data in terms of your fire department, we had a major increase in our call load. So more calls, the higher the dispatch charges. So we ran a lot more, our call load went way up this year. Um, also, as you know, rising fuel costs are becoming astronomical for our fire engines. Um, you know, huge increases, thirty-three percent increase in our fuel costs alone, um, which increase, which adds to increased cost for products. Um, we just got notifications from some of our vendors that due to increased fuel costs, they're going to charge us more for supply. So it really is a trickle effect. The other thing that should be noted, um, over the last couple of years, we also did not do any type of a C P I, uh, increase whatsoever. We've kept it, again, we've been lowering it and keeping it static. Um, the other thing that went up this year was, uh, insurance, our auto insurance, liability and collision insurance, all, that all went up. Um, so we're also, you'll see a category that's, we call it increased management fees, but, uh, it's important to note what those ma, um, management fees are. They include all of the ancillary things that actually provide service to the city, such as our mechanics, our engines are getting older, they're taking a beating out here in the streets, so obviously more maintenance, more calls, so we're using our mechanics more often. Um, breathing apparatus, upkeep, safety clothing, um, just, you know, service center warehouse charges. It's also our E M S side, we're, um, through our E M S coordinator at county level for Dr. Pennington, we're required to have an E M S physician on staff, which, we pay a small portion of that. It's, it's very small, but we are a part of that pool. Also, stage for the office of the fire marshal and investigator response. So that was the big reason for the huge increase that we had initially. So I got to work with my staff analyst and actually over the last three weeks have really been honing this thing down because I wasn't, as a matter of fact, it just about gave me a coronary when I saw the original increase. I just couldn't believe it and I wasn't going to accept it. And mainly I didn't want to stand in you and tell you, "Oh, we're going to raise the contract by eight hundred thousand dollars." I didn't want to get run out of town just yet. Um, so due to significant work by myself, um, county staff and, um, others, so basically we reduced the contract. So how did we do that? You should have it in front of you right there. We actually are reducing the cost of the number of battalion chiefs that you're paying for. The reason we're doing that is my division is going to get slightly bigger this fiscal year, um, and it, so I'm going to take in additional county areas. So in order to, it, it wouldn't be fair for the city to be paying a hundred percent of my salary if all of a sudden I'm managing other areas of the county. Um, the workload for me will not be that significant, I'll be able to, uh, still make that happen and be responsive to the city, but, um, with that increased area, you're only going to be paying for a portion of my salary now, whereas you were paying a hundred percent, you're going to be paying seventy percent now, so we took point three off of that. Same thing for the battalion chiefs, the, you were paying a hundred percent for three battalion chiefs, now you're going to pay basically two point five, for two point five battalion chiefs. But you're going to get the same level of service, it's not going to change anything. You're still here, I'm still here, I'm not going anywhere. So basically it was a way to consolidate and reduce your contract amount. Next thing we did, uh, we reduced our services and supplies, we really got the pencil out and sharpened it up and, uh, saved you two hundred thousand dollars there by spending less. We, uh, trimmed a little bit in, uh, training where we could. Um, we also, one of the things that I think is important to note that, uh, we started several programs in-house, Doug was laughing at me because, uh, he called it our fault, but it really is a big thing. It's, uh, you know, we started looking at where can we reduce our costs when it comes to contractors and services. Uh, we were sent, as an example, we were sending all of our power saws, all of our equipment, we were sending to a contractor who would make all those repairs, charges and then send it back. So we were paying a lot of money because we have a lot of, as you can imagine, we have a lot of tools, we have a lot of saws, a lot of power equipment. So I spent a little money and, uh, actually bought some equipment and trained some of our firefighters. Now we do all of that in-house. We, we repair all of our own equipment, we do not send it out, we do all of it ourselves. As a matter of fact, it's kind of grown to the point where we're actually repairing everything in the north desert, which, including, you know, all the fire stations in this area and that surrounding communities, and then we charge them back. So we're actually saving a lot of money with that. There's also a couple of projects that we needed to have completed in our fire stations where originally we were going to go out and hire a contractor. Our fire stations are getting to be older, they need to, you know, there's some things that we need to do to them and, uh, the wear and tear alone. So, um, a lot of our firefighters have other skills that, uh, are applicable to doing work in-house. Some of them are electricians, some of them are contractors. So we started doing work in-house, instead of going out and hiring a contractor, we're doing work that we would normally add to our budget this year, that would come back to you, and, uh, we're doing work in-house. Like we did a remodel of the kitchen at fire station three eleven completely in-house. We did all the wiring, changed from fluorescent to incandescent lighting, all of it in-house. So we never went out, we didn't use a contractor, we kept it in-house. So we're, now, a couple of that was running twenty-two calls a day sometimes and that can be pretty difficult. But, uh, but we did it and we made it work. The other thing, uh, we're working on grants, uh, we had some aging extrication equipment that needed to be replaced. Our jaws of life are probably fifteen plus years old. They're, some of the original jaws of life that are out there, they were old Hurst Tools, which is a brand that was original, but these things are really old, they're falling apart. Um, in some cases, we were not able to actually pop the door on a car with some of these things because the power was nothing like what we needed. So we applied for a grant and we actually got a grant and we were able to purchase two full sets to go on city engine companies, that's about fifty thousand dollars. So able to save the city fifty thousand dollars and we replaced those jaws of life and, uh, so we're going to continue to pursue grants- So we applied for a grant and we actually got a grant, and we were able to purchase two full sets to go on city engine companies. That's about fifty thousand dollars. So able to save the city fifty thousand dollars and we replaced those jaws of life. And, uh, so we're going to continue to pursue grants where we can. There were some other grants that we actually got back this year that helped out the city. One of them was disaster reimbursement from the previous flooding. Uh, we brought back a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars to the city, so it just kind of shows the importance of the things that we're working on. And, uh, we'll continue to do those as well. Probably the single biggest thing, and, um, I really want to give a lot of kudos to our county firefighters. And, uh, you may have saw, has a press release at the county, and, uh, John just mentioned it a little bit, that's going to be actually extended to other work groups. Our county firefighters and exempt managers to all the chiefs as well actually took a seven percent salary reduction achieved through a reduced retirement pickup and a couple of other things, but that, that alone saved the city well over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that, that was, to me, that was really stepping up and giving back and saved the county and saved our contract city. So that was a big reduction. That three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and giving that back was big. So that really helped us out a lot. Um, so, um, one of the things that, uh, I did actually want to mention was that, um, I didn't really provide an eight percent, you can kind of take eight percent off twelve million, nine hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. But all I'm going to tell you is eight percent for us is shutting down one engine company in this city. That's, that's where it equates to. So eight percent is shutting down one complete engine company. Um, and then on your sheet, I don't, you can read it for yourself on your sheet, uh, you'll actually, I don't think it's fair to just throw out you're going to lose one engine company. I also want you to have an understanding of what that means. Um, realizing you have a tough decision to make and I'll support you, you know, whichever way you go. But at least you have the information in front of you. The other thing I think is important to note is that, um, on your sheet, I actually did a little bit of a historical background and some history on the fire department here and the changes that occurred. Um, obviously, as most of you know, nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand and eight were boom years in the city of Victorville. So you can kind of see some of the data there. It's incredible, um, the changes that occurred, and I think all of us are aware. Um, I'll do a little fire department comparison, just to show you the comparison between your fire department of today and your fire department ten years ago in the year two thousand. In the year two thousand, the city population was sixty-six thousand people. Today, pushing a hundred and fifteen thousand people, as you all know. So double the population. Our incident statistics are, in two thousand, we ran seven thousand, two hundred calls. Today, we're, we're pushing thirteen thousand, five hundred, and it's projected that we'll run fourteen thousand plus incidents this year alone. So calls have doubled, population have doubled, but if you look at your fire department, we've changed very little over the last ten years. And in fact, the only thing that's changed in terms of staffing is one single engine company, and that was due to the construction of Fire Station Three Twelve. So Fire Station Three Twelve, you added one engine company, but remember, now the calls doubled. So we're still trying to keep up with that. But if you look at actual staffing, we are actually less today than we were ten years ago. Less chiefs, less fire prevention, less everything. So we, my goal has been to take it back to two thousand levels without sacrificing service. And that, I just want to reiterate that my biggest thing is, is service, protecting our fire suppression response, um, and also giving something back to the city and help eliminate costs where I can. So there's a lot of information that I provided for you there. Um, there's some consequences. Uh, one of the things that I did want to note was that, uh, last year alone, we had a nine point five increase in our call load. Um, we run a lot of fires in this city. Um, I'll break that down for you if you so desire, and I can get that to you. But, uh, in this city, last year, we ran a hundred and fifty structure fires. That's a lot. And, uh, probably half of those were commercial structure fires. The city still has the most industrial, commercial base with what we consider to be high-risk occupancies. And, uh, I think that's important to note. So, um, the loss of eight percent would be the reduction of one engine company, which currently you have five engines serving the city. Uh, that would take it down to four. So with that, I'd be glad, oh, one, one last thing. I just want to mention the response time. It's right on the front page. I'm pretty actually proud of that because, uh, when we came here in two thousand and eight, um, the city fire department was running about twelve thousand, one hundred calls, right around there. Um, at that time, when we came here, the response time was seven point two five minutes. Today, it's six point five eight. So we have actually, even though we have increased our call load over nine percent, we've brought the response time down. And it's due to the regional response pattern that you see with county fire in the area where the closest resource goes. And I put in here also that we just added automatic vehicle locators to our fire engine, so you should see that number hopefully maintain or go down. But if the calls get busier, that you will start seeing that response time start to climb. So, um, optimum is four to six minutes. Once you start getting over six minutes, you start, you need to start looking at service and what can you do to bring it down. So that's what we're doing. So with that, um, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
I have a question, Chief. Uh, your overtime, what, what is the, uh, what's the trouble?
Yeah, I don't have it right in front of me, but overtime's right around three hundred thousand dollars, somewhere in that. I don't know the exact number. And, and one thing that we're a little bit different, uh, just to try to clarify, in the police department, we don't have vacant positions. We have constant, consistent staffing on our fire engines. So we have three personnel on each and every engine company, which is a paramedic and two EMTs in the composition, of course, being a captain and engineer and a firefighter. Um, we, we don't have vacancies. We fill those with overtime. So even with that, we actually maintain a pretty good, um, a pretty low overtime compared. And, uh, that's always been a goal of mine, is to reduce overtime. And I take a perfect example of that would be, and, uh, you may remember, in the previous fire department, uh, when Victorville still had its own department, they were paying a lot of overtime costs out at SCLA. They would send engines out there and they would increase staffing, and there was a lot of overtime being paid out there. And when I came in, I looked at that and, and, uh, through my research, found out that FAA does not require us to send an additional engine company out to the airport. FAA, you know, when you're looking at indexing for airports, it's about how much water you can deliver. It's not how many people are there. So I, I was able to determine, I don't need to send an extra engine company out there. I can still maintain an index C or E, which is the highest, with what I have out there. So that, that saves a lot of overtime. So, so we are actually bringing that overtime amount down. And all of our positions are currently filled, so actually overtime is, uh, not as significant as it was at one time.
I have one, uh, you indicated that a large number, I believe you said fifty percent, but of all your fire calls, calls were commercial, fire calls?
Yes, we, we actually respond to a good number of incidents in apartment complexes, um, for terms of, uh, just making sure we all are on the same page. We consider our commercial occupancies, apartment businesses, and that type of thing.
When it comes to commercial fire insurance, the ISO rating is very important?
That's a good point, and, uh, that is in your document, documented as well. And, uh, I've heard a couple of rumors on this, so I just want to make sure you guys hear it straight from me. Uh, we're currently undergoing a insurance services office review. ISO has been to town. They're actually, we've met with them several times over the last three months. And basically, they come in and they take a comprehensive look at your fire department, but it's not just the fire department. It's also water. They've met with some of the officials from the water department. They take a, a snapshot of the city of Victorville, and what is your insurance services office rating? That potentially could have a cost impact one way or the other, determining, you know, depending on how that comes out, on primarily businesses, because that's who it affects the most, but it could be residential. Uh, basically, you're graded on a scale of one to ten. Victorville, in the past, has been a three, an ISO three, which is actually a very, very good rating. That, that's, that's outstanding. That really is. To be an ISO one, there's only a couple of departments in the whole state that are ISO one. That's LA City. But basically, they have a fire station on every corner. We'll never have that here. So for us, to be an ISO three is an excellent thing. Um, but since the city's original ISO three rating, we've have grown tremendously. We're twice as busy. We've got a lot more people. So we have a lot more issues. So ISO is in town. Um, they have conducted all of their analysis. We haven't got any word back from them yet, so I don't know what that number's going to be. But hopefully, we're going to maintain a three. Um, we were able to show them a big benefit from our regional response plan and the use of extra equipment that we can actually bring to the city, and I think that's going to be favorable. Um, but with that said, they're basing that rating on current levels of service that you see today. So if we reduce that, that could negatively impact that ISO grading, which would be a cost impact. And, and I couldn't tell you what that is because I don't know. Um, it could be a business impact and a residential impact in terms of insurance.
Yeah, I probably should speak up on this. I, a couple of years-
I'm looking at you too.
Yeah, a couple of years ago, I actually, um, did a survey of, of the insurance companies that we do business with to determine if you went from a rating of three to four, how it would affect residential. And it absolutely has no effect on residential. It actually doesn't affect residential until you get to a six. But in the commercial sector, especially industrial buildings, um, this could kill hundreds of jobs. Because we have a lot of people, a, a lot of businesses locating the city of Victorville based upon our, our ISO rating. And, uh, if we were to go to a four or five, that would be a real problem for them because their costs and insurance premiums go up dramatically, so.
Exactly. That was actually what I had found out as well. The primary impact would in fact be the business community. So. Any other questions?
Um, you have thirteen thousand, five hundred calls. Uh, how many of those calls are, uh, for a automobile accident?
We run over a thousand traffic accidents. We've run over a thousand traffic accidents in this city. The, the city is, I don't know what it is. Well, yeah, I do. It's the numbers of folks and the number of cars driving out. Not all of those are serious, obviously. Uh, I can get you a percentage, but I do know last year we ran over a thousand traffic accident calls. Well over a thousand.
Well, what I'm looking for is, is a, a notion of, uh, part of your schedule of not responding to the car accidents and whatever. We've got the ambulance service in town. I mean, it's not something, we put, we went to all this expense to put the paramedics on board for a very good reason, and that was to make sure that our citizens, uh, when they need that respond, you guys are there as well as the ambulance. Uh, and at the moment, I'm looking for all little niches right now, and one of which is, uh, is, would there have been, let's say for the moment that we just blanket say you won't respond any, uh, car accident unless somebody says, hey, there's a fire involved, and then all of a sudden you respond, and you're not as quick as you would have been otherwise. But let's say for the moment the policy was not to respond to a car accident. Does that affect your budgeting, your manning level, or anything in any fashion whatsoever in terms of the, uh, the budget for the fire department?
Uh, probably not, but I'll just take it a step further and say that would be a huge mistake. Um, not responding to traffic accidents, um, I look at that as one of our primary roles, actually. Because the bottom line is, um, there are many other factors, um, other than the injuries. Um, there's the hazardous side of it. There's the entrapment side of it, the people trapped potentially. There's usually some sort of a spill, whether it be oil, radio, but there's usually all sorts of hazards. Um, we don't want to be called after the fact when there's a fire. That's way too late. Uh, just let me give you a breakdown real quick, and, and hopefully, I, I know what you're, what you're saying and where you're going. Um, we're running, obviously, as most of you probably know, most of our incidents are in fact medically related. They're, they're medical. Eighty percent of what we do is medical, but that's a standard nationwide. One of the things that I think is important to remember is, um, the response time. Um, we have an excellent relationship with AMR. We actually work real hard and real close with AMR. And, uh, we've actually developed what we call our Team Five concept, where we got with AMR and we mashed our mission statements together. And we said, you know, we're going to work together to provide the best level of care for the citizens of Victorville. Um, one, with that said, um, AMR, um, obviously, when the fire service grew up, we grew up around the community. So our fire stations are located strategically throughout the city to optimize response time. And, and again, when, when you're talking about a medical emergency, response time is critical. After six minutes, in terms of a cardiac arrest, as most of you are aware, probably, you start having irreversible damage. That's why it's so important to get that first level of care there in a rapid amount of time. Um, now, with that said, generally with our fire engines, we're able to do that. We're very busy, but we're, we're strategically located in our neighborhoods. Our response times are good. AMR is not so lucky. AMR is so busy right now that, for the most part, they could be coming from Apple Valley. They could be coming from Rancho Cucamonga for a call in Brentwood. Not always the case, but then the other key, so it's, it's, it's a very dynamic situation for AMR. They could be anywhere, whereas we're kind of located in our communities, so we're optimized for response time. The other problem with, um, the current healthcare system in the high desert, and any of you that have been around this for, you probably know, our call load is going way up, and we also have this little thing now called hospital bed delays. Our ambulances are taking a patient, they're driving to the hospital, but there's no beds available for them. So the ambulance is sitting at that hospital sometimes for two hours, up to two hours. And that, and it's, it's a shame. It's really taxing the healthcare system in this high desert. So bed delays is, is a huge, huge thing. Um, so is it a challenge for us? Yes, it is. One of the things, though, that we are actually working on, that's going to address what you're talking about, Councilmember Rothschild, is, um, we're looking at the potential to, um, actually bring forward a tiered level medical response that'll, will save you money. As still is this place is, we're still going to need the same level of service we have today. But what we're going to try to do is, um, we're going to have a tiered response where if you call, and the only thing that is, and you'd be surprised, maybe you're not, people call nine-one-one for everything. They'll call nine-one-one and ask us if the dump's open, and, and that's, and we've had that happen. They'll call nine-one-one for everything from a bent finger to, you know, and what we're here for is the legitimate. And we, it's hard to actually look at and say, okay, that's a legitimate call or it's not. But we're going to look at a tiered response where if you call, and let's say it's just an injured or scraped finger, we're going to say, okay, well, we'll have an ambulance there eventually, but you may not get it right away. You may have to wait till they're off bed delay at St. Mary's. We're not there yet, but we do realize we're running a lot of calls, and somewhere we need to get a handle on it and actually be available for the real priorities to the city. So I would have a tremendous concern about not going to traffic accidents. It wouldn't affect your budget anyway. So the real, the real issue is medical care, but it's a, it's a real healthcare issue in the high desert. So it's much greater than just the fire department. I just, uh, had a conversation with Dr. Peterson from Desert Valley, and, uh, we did a seminar for the local Victorville Chamber of Leadership. And we talked about healthcare issues, and it is huge what is going on out there in terms of the increase and all those kinds of issues. So it's a big issue in the desert.
And, and the analysts that don't have jaws of life?
Ambulances don't have the equipment, uh, they, uh, they basically, and again, I want to be careful because I don't in any way, shape, or form want to say anything negative about them. They work hard and we, we have a good partnership with them. But the fact that the reality is, they are extremely busy, and there are many times during the day where I will see that we're out of ambulances in the entire high desert, entire high desert. And they're doing move-ups from Rancho Cucamonga. Anything else?
Thank you, Sid.
Thank you.
Um, next up on the list, and these are sorted just by account code, so it's not exactly, uh, a whole lot of rhyme or reason to it, uh, from the information you can see on here, but next up actually is, uh, Phil Webb with the Development Department. Uh, I believe he's, uh, the Development Department has made, made deep cuts two years ago, um, because of the lack of development around the city, and, uh, has been maintaining those cuts and making additional cuts, uh, this year as well. And I think you're going to talk mostly about cuts proposed for next year, if, uh, if in fact we get to that point.
Uh, yes. Uh, good afternoon, council, council members, Mr. Mayor. Um, this will be brief because as Doug kind of, um, stated, there's not much left. So having said that, um, the Development Department was formed about four years ago. The city decided to merge the Planning Department with the Building and Code Enforcement Department, um, thus eliminating one director, and that's when we started to, uh, begin reducing. Um, at that time, four years ago, the Development Department general fund budget was five and a quarter million dollars, and the staffing was fifty. And by the way, with fifty employees at the height of the boom, which most of you remember, uh, the city offered excellent service through the Development Department, through, to the community. Um, just note that with all of the development that was going on up here and an herd of amount of growth and projects, um, six, six hundred public hearings a year before the Planning Commission, as you recall. Um, compared to what is a slow economy, a comparable sized city, Rancho Cucamonga today has forty-seven people in their department. So even at the height of our boom, we managed to, to provide planning, building, and code enforcement services, um, with only fifty employees. And as I stated, a budget of five and a quarter million. Over the past four years, the department budget has been reduced by over seventy percent. And currently, we have twenty-three employees in our department handling those three divisions. Before you today are budget proposals based on both eight percent and twenty-nine percent reductions. A scenario one is actually where we currently are. We are, we are over- We are, we are over an eight percent reduction right now. We've had a couple more retirements and a voluntary layoffs in our department. Um, and with that, and with, uh, the combining of responsibilities and eliminating a lot of waste over the years, um, and many people doing multiple jobs, we are currently at over an eight percent reduction, probably close to fifteen percent reduction over last year's budget. Again, with twenty-three employees in scenario one, there will be no further employee layoffs in our department. Um, there will be some, there, immediately as of now, there has to be some reorganization once again within our department. We've lost a, uh, building inspector, our, our second to the last building inspector and second to the last building tech who works the front counter. Um, what we are requesting at this time in this budget is that the building tech at the counter, um, be reinstated as inspector, which he was two years ago to fill the one vacancy. Our two assistant planners would be moved to the front counter, and they would provide not only planning information, but also all building information and approve all minor building projects. Uh, whereas a building tech is not qualified to provide planning information at the counter, a planner can be trained to approve patio covers, room additions, et cetera. So now they will serve their double duty, which I should state, over the past few years, the plan checkers have not only been plan checking, um, they have the additional responsibilities of plan checking for, um, for planning, uh, for fire plan check, which we thought was an effective and efficient use of their time. And, um, as of the last layoff two years ago, they are now out in the field inspecting as well. So everyone's doing a variety of jobs, and it was time for, uh, some of the planners, uh, we've taken a hit, they've taken a hit in numbers, but also to take a hit in duties. So they will be doing double duty as affected without any changes unless, um, something, some miracle happens and we're granted additional staff. Um, they will be providing both building and planning services at the counter, um, full time. Um, in that scenario, when one's out or when they're gone, which is done. So there will be times when counter closes, and we, um, I apologize, but the days of excellent service from our department have been gone for a while, whether you're aware of it or not. Um, in scenario one, we're rating that, um, at best, we will provide good service, um, at worst, fair service. Um, also code enforcement has to be reduced to a six day work week, as you recall. We, we moved from a four day, from a five day work week to a six day work week, and then the council's requested a seven day work week several years ago. Um, with, with some of the losses over the last couple of years in code enforcement personnel, it is not safe for one person to be on duty on Sundays, and we can't split the shift to where we can get weekday coverage when staffing is here, when the court is in session, and still have sufficient weekend coverage. So, um, unless directed otherwise, uh, Sundays will be eliminated from the roster. Um, they will still be available Fridays and Saturdays. Um, again, I think we have six, six working, six working a seventy-five square mile plus area, seven days a week. You figure it out, staff wise, it's impossible to do. And they've been doing it for the last couple of years, hoping against all odds that some miracle would happen. At this point, Sundays are out, it's no longer safe, period. Um, that's our scenario now. We do nothing, and this is where I am, we go away today, and we're done. Um, with that, our budget, which was once I said five and a quarter million dollars, is at one point six million dollars. Our staffing level is at twenty-three. By the way, those are both comparable to nineteen ninety-five, which was our most recent low, low in development, according to the finance statistics, uh, presented a few weeks back. This is nineteen ninety-five levels, over fifteen years ago, um, less employees and approximately the same budget out of the general fund of one point six million dollars. Um, that, that gives us almost a fifteen percent reduction, revenue there's no effect, and as I stated, service is good to fair. Scenario two is a twenty-nine percent reduction. Uh, it requires some more changes, there would be at least two employee, two more employee layoffs. Um, this change is a, is a little, maybe a little difficult to understand at first, but code enforcement services would be eliminated throughout most of the city. And that is in order, and the reason for that is, um, and thanks a lot, uh, actually, a lot to George Duran, as well as, um, Economic Development for contributing grants towards us. Over the years, we have become more and more dependent on CDVG grants, uh, senior, uh, uh, forgive me, yeah, NSP and also tire grants. Um, I currently have planners out in the field looking for tires in the desert. I currently have code enforcement and building, um, people, or building officials out in the field doing boardups, um, the car washes down the block, uh, those were thanks to the staff on hand. We're not contract contracting those out, we are draining our own pools. We have purchased weed eaters, or weed eaters, and we are out there clearing lots. Um, there's not much more we can do at this point. What happens in the twenty-nine percent scenario is the reason there's only two more layoffs is our code enforcement become a hundred percent funded by state grants. When you're a hundred percent funded, there is no gray area where you can take a call here and there and run to the other side of the town. They will be restricted to the freeway corridor and Old Town only. So there, there is absolutely no opportunity to receive calls and to respond to code enforcement. We will have the manager who is doing other responsibility also, who's not a hundred percent, um, dependent on that, on, on those grants, and the building official, they would respond, um, to health and safety, health and safety calls only. So no more, there's a couch on my roof or in my yard, or there's weeds, or any of that, that's all done. Uh, basically, a house is falling on me, we will respond, and that's all we can do. And again, what it, what it's come down to in our department is we have funded some people so much on grants and spread it around and redone it and redone it to the point that the only savings we can achieve for you is to somehow absorb the sick time days off vacation and fringe benefits that the grants do not fund unless they cover you one hundred percent. If covered one hundred percent, we can absorb that, save the code enforcement, code enforcement officers jobs, and they will patrol only the CDVG area and only search for tires. And, and that's why. It all has to do with, we are down to just fringe benefits and, and days off, that's it. Otherwise, most everyone's funded. Um, so, so that, in that scenario, the second scenario, the twenty-nine percent reduction, our budget goes down to one point three million. And, um, and the revenue, there is about a hundred thousand dollar loss in revenue. Um, there was no loss in revenue in the first scenario, and the second scenario, there's about a hundred thousand because, um, we're, code enforcement is bringing in over a hundred thousand dollars in fines per year. And, um, they seem to be more oriented towards the west side or, um, abandoned properties, they're coming in from banks. The, the, the actual payments are coming in from banks, realtors, et cetera, to get properties turned over. So those are in areas that are outside, we're not getting a lot of fines paid in Old Town. Um, so we're, we're not expecting to receive a lot. So we lose about a hundred thousand in revenue on top of that. Our services at that, at that point are, are obviously fair at the best and poor. Um, and that's, that's what it amounts to. So we've got a good fair with, where we currently are at good fair, and we could go down to fair to poor is the most optimistic, um, way I could put it as far as what our services would be with a twenty-nine percent cut. And you guys, you, most of you, you know, um, where we're at, so we're, we're pretty much at the, at the bottom here. And, um, um, having said that, if you ask, there is one more thing, why, where, how do we decide? Um, I mean, we've had attrition, um, we've had people volunteer, um, to retire or to leave because, um, in the sake of keeping other people's jobs over the last couple of years. I think we probably per capita have the highest rate, or one of the highest rates in our department of that. Um, and, um, we've lost, we've lost numerous planners. Uh, two years ago, we took a big chunk out of building in order to make it more efficient. And if you, if you went out on contract, um, we had people doing double duty and we lost half of our building division. Uh, planning's gone down, and now it's time for planning to do more double duty. And also, um, at this point, we have done all we could to preserve code enforcement. Um, we will still preserve their jobs, other than two employees being laid off, but we cannot preserve that service. If why, well, other than health and safety, you've got an appearance and aesthetic issue versus who's going to process the, the, the future, the current and future generators of revenue that's going to help bring this city back and help provide the public services that you want. Um, so development has to continue, um, and that's, that's basically, that's basically how we decide. Any questions?
Thanks, Bill. Uh, next up is, uh, engineering. Uh, Sean McGlade, our city engineer is going to come up to discuss, uh, the engineering department. Although the first piece of this is focused, uh, on the general fund. Um, the, the dollar figures you see here are just, uh, the general fund dollars that are spent in engineering, but the department itself is much larger, uh, because of the reliance on, uh, grants and other restricted funds, uh, Measure I and, and other funding sources. So I believe that, uh, Mr. McGlade is going to go into a little bit deeper than just the general fund impacts, uh, but also into some of the other impacts of some of the, uh, potential decisions that are being considered by, by the city and by Sandbag at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson, um, Mr. Mayor, council. Um, I guess the unique thing about the engineering department, um, is the responsibility for the capital improvement program and the restricted funds that, uh, go along with that. And I think just right off the bat, one of the major impacts that there would be to, uh, the engineering department would be the disposition of the La Mesa and Esquali interchange. Um, as you know, we were awarded a triple A authority from Caltrans, uh, about eighteen months ago, uh, which would have, uh, allowed the city staff to actually, um, manage and administer, um, a sixty million dollar project. Uh, we had submitted to them a staffing level, uh, to get that approval, and that was, you know, comprised of close to half of our, um, department staff. Um, again, with the disposition of the interchange, uh, as it relates to our work effort in the engineering department, uh, being somewhat unknown, it is very difficult for me to, uh, give you with any great level of detail just what our staffing level, uh, would be reduced to. The only thing I could do was to, uh, take a look at restricted funds and grant funds that we already have, um, and back in the staff needs to administer those contracts. We have, uh, probably ten point nine million dollars of, uh, grant funds not associated with La Mesa and Esquali interchange. That comes from Economic Development Administration, Federal Aviation Administration, uh, CNAC, um, and various projects, both at the airport and around the city, um, that those grants would be used for. In looking at just the general fund impact, um, obviously, having a, let's say, a public works inspector, um, he, his time would not be assigned one hundred percent to the interchange. There would be some of his time spent doing public works inspections for development type, um, public improvements that were being installed, but not enough to, that's not enough to take up one hundred percent of his time. So without the interchange, that causes us then to rein back on the service that we would ordinarily be able to provide, um, to the development side of, um, the city business. Uh, for example, I mean, typically, we've been able to respond to a request for an inspection next day. And, uh, with these kinds of reductions, we would not be able to do that. With the, uh, the proposed budget, uh, with those certain assumptions, kind of backing in from, uh, restricted funds, um, we put together really, um, a, a budget that, um, didn't look at can we do eight percent? Can we do twenty-nine percent? It ended up around thirty plus percent just by doing that. So I don't have an eight percent and a twenty-nine percent that is meaningful to, to present to you. Um, and again, that's, uh, with an assumption of a level of participation with the La Mesa and Esquali interchange greatly reduced, but some participation. Beyond that, um, if there's actually zero participation, um, of staff, uh, we, we have, um, surveyors, we have, uh, engineers, we have inspectors, um, that we're hoping to persuade Sandbag to utilize to the best, uh, of their ability for that, uh, project. If they say no to that, um, then we're going to have, uh, um, a further impact to our budget. Um, that is not presented to you yet until we get into the, uh, cooperative agreement with Sandbag. And, um, Doug Robertson and myself will be meeting with them to try and, uh, get resolution to that. Um, in the past year, the department has, um, had two resignations and, uh, one retirement. And, uh, that in and of itself, it was, you know, a help to, um, curtailing the budget, um, in the overall. Um, the, one of those resignations was, um, an engineer who just, it was, was zero on the general fund. So, um, it was a, a retirement and resignation that had had the biggest benefit to the, uh, the general fund budget. Um, the other constraint then, as I mentioned earlier, um, and as Doug, um, made reference to, with the, cities need to find the, um, its share of the La Mesa and Esquali interchange, let's assume it goes forward under the Sandbag, um, administration. There's a, a lot of those, um, revenues that we would otherwise have planned to use that are going to be tied up and being pledged towards the sharing of the, um, the, the city share of the interchange cost. In addition, revenues from those sources are, are down considerably. Um, and the, the net result of all of that is that, uh, the engineering department is going to take, um, a severe hit uh, as a result of the one project that, um, would get transferred over to Sandbag. Um, looking forward to, um, the, the scenario that it doesn't get built at all, then the challenge becomes, what happens then if there are restricted funds that are not needed to cost share on the interchange, then what? And that's something that, you know, I'm obviously going to need guidance on. Um, do we keep reserving that money for that sharing of the interchange as time goes on until we have enough money to, to be able to bring it to fruition? Or do we spend that money and keep people in jobs? It's a, it's a dilemma, uh, and it's a tough decision, but, um, I just wanted to be sure that the council understood that that's, um, uh, as far as affecting the engineering department, that's where we are. Without any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Sean. Just to clarify one statement that you made, um, that, uh, one of your retirements was someone who was a hundred percent funded from sources other than the general fund, but then you said that it was actually the biggest benefit to the general fund. Can you explain how that occurs? I believe that you took other engineers who were funded through general fund operations and, and actually were able to move them to those projects instead, is that how that occurred? Or was there, did I misunderstand something that you said?
Um, I think what I was trying to say that the, um, that there was three altogether. There was one who was not associated at all with the general fund, but the other two were, and that was the benefit.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I'm sorry if I didn't.
Thank you for that clarification. Uh, next up is actually public works.
Before you finish on, on this one, uh, in regard to the La Mesa and Esquali interchange, I think the council is aware that these are continuing negotiations in regard to, uh, the agreements that we have. Um, tentatively, I think it's been accurately stated that the, uh, the tentative agreement will require a ten million dollar deposit. And then as those expenditures are get reduced, the city will be required to put up additional funds. We believe that this will go forward, we believe that it's actually going very smoothly, and Sandbag is moving, um, very quickly. Uh, their calendar is to move this as quickly as possible. Uh, we have some, um, points to negotiate, but we believe that those will be worked out. And we've learned to, to, to anticipate the uncertainty, and certainly, it's possible that this doesn't get worked out. We don't build an Esquali interchange, and we don't deliver ten million dollars to them. But we're, we're presuming on the assumption that that is going to occur, and, um, that will recur prior to June thirtieth.
Uh, next up is public works. Uh, city council members received a memo, uh, yesterday indicating that Mr. McGlade was, uh, being temporarily asked to oversee public works as we do, uh, as Mr. Cox performs a salary survey and, and examination of the public works water departments to see. to see, uh, if he needs to hire one, two, or, or no additional employees. Uh, I guess Doug Matthews got the short straw to make the presentation as they, uh, work together as a team, um, i- in the absence of a department head, uh, to, to get, get their budgets in, uh, in the same manner as they would have, uh, otherwise. And I appreciate all of the hard work of their staff for, for picking up that, uh, that task and, and running with it and getting the job done. Uh, again, public works has a lot of, uh, costs that are charged to restricted funds. Um, and although I'm sure Doug could go into those, I think the focus needs to stay on the general fund, at least till we get through today's, uh, today's first part of this presentation. Doug, if you could explain, uh, kind of where we're, what we're looking at as far as.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Um, to put it in perspective, public works currently has about a two million dollar general fund. And the divisions under there are animal care and control, fleet maintenance, fueling stations, graffiti abatement, open space medians, plant check and street sweeping. Uh, two of those we didn't look at. One was fueling stations because they currently generate a profit. So to take them out of the mix would just reduce what we're going to bring into the general fund. Uh, the other one was plan check. It's, we reduce the level of plant, um, services and plan check, or at least the amount of personnel charged to it. Currently just one person and we reduced it and put it in some other places. So in looking at the two scenarios, um, we looked at the eight percent and we can achieve that eight percent reduction without, um, any proposed layoffs or reduction in the level of service. Basically in the memo you have with, uh, before you from Sean, that comes from attrition that has gone on over the year, uh, a reassignment, a reallocation of administrative and support staff, um, going on to additional budget functions that we now have in public works such as water. And when that didn't make the eight percent, we looked at which of those services would not be a detriment to the city or necessarily reduce services and that became the open space budget. So with three people in open space, what we look at is what can we do there? Um, the level of service, what would we reduce? How could we reduce it? And those are the areas, the medians in Seventh Street, Green Tree Boulevard and such, it had a lot of grass and high maintenance areas. So in the eight percent, the reduction there would be not a reduction in, in staff because we would, uh, reallocate those to L-Mat areas. But it would be, uh, taking out the grass and then some of the plants that are high maintenance. And it would be a truly desert landscaping that took maybe, you know, one half of a full-time equivalent to take care of. Going on to the twenty-nine percent, um, that has a little more impact. And again, we, you know, looked at what we could and couldn't touch. And, and the first one is animal control. Uh, we are required to keep some level of service in animal control per some, some of the laws and codes out there. We would need to reduce animal control by one officer. Currently we have three to cover seventy-four square miles and that would reduce to two officers. That would result, um, those two officers would have to pick up an additional thirty-five-hundred calls a year. Um, the response time would decrease. We would have to prioritize what type of calls would actually require the presence of an animal control officer and which we could try and handle over the phone. Obviously, would we get some additional complaints? And it would be challenging for, um, the, um, weekend call because we do have animal control twenty-four, seven, seven days a week. So with two officers, that one would become kind of difficult. Uh, we could make, um, do some reallocation. We could get down to twenty-six percent without laying off this individual. So I just want to throw that out there. Uh, the next one is graffiti abatement. Uh, we only really have one full-time person of that for the whole city at this time. So reducing that, taking hours away from that person to half would be a fifty-four percent reduction. And obviously it would just reduce our response time and the amount of graffiti we could get to out there. The third one would be street sweeping. Uh, we could do a seventy-four percent reduction there. Uh, that would require the layoff of, uh, two full-time employees out of four. We currently have four operators. Some of the impacts there, um, currently we sweep residential neighborhoods, that would go away. Um, our non-commercial arterial and collectors, we currently do a four-week turnaround. That would be twice annual. And some of our major commercial routes such as Seventh, La Paz and Amargosa, we currently do a one week and that would go to monthly. Um, with those combined, um, we still didn't get there. So our last group that we could look at was fleet maintenance where we have, um, eight mechanics. So in order to make the twenty-nine percent, that would require the reduction of three of those eight mechanics. Now with that being said, obviously in order to keep up with our levels of service, we would have to reduce the fleet. So I guess the hope is if the reduction went to thirty percent, we would be able to eliminate thirty percent of our fleet or, or equipment that we have to maintain. Um, without that, uh, it, you know, it'd be pretty difficult to ma-, uh, reduce them further. They've gone from fifteen mechanics down to eight already. And we picked up the water department, so we've increased equipment over the past years and not reduced equipment. So those are the areas we look at on the general fund. We can get there, but, um, levels of service would definitely be reduced. Questions?
Thank you, Doug. Uh, last step for the general fund is, uh, John Gargan with Community Services.
Mayor, Council. Um, as the, the other directors have spoken, you know, we've, uh, all been experiencing cuts over the last, um, few years. Um, we started three years ago and starting to reduce the service levels. Um, uh, the, the amount that we importalize, uh, or that we, uh, use pesticides, the mowing schedules, all those types of things, we've tried to start ratcheting back and, um, even started eliminating some of the special events through recreation, Park in the Mojave River Run, um, Winter Wonderland, Santa's, Santa's Workshop, Contra's in the Park, those types of things. If they weren't paying for themselves, uh, they were eliminated. Um, in, in the past, um, when the dip, when we had a park and rec district, uh, there was money that came in through the taxes that were set, were set aside. That, that was eliminated when, uh, it all went into the general fund. So that's why I, I'm speaking to, to all my divisions, um, today, yeah, other than the library. And even with the library, with that part being, um, reduced a little bit, we still will have some level of service reduced. We're going to have to lay off a, a couple of part timers, but, uh, we will be able to at least maintain being open the six days a week that we currently are because, uh, without being able to, to at least operate at the level of our, our income. If we had to make the cuts for the actual percentages, we were looking at having to close, uh, at least one or maybe two more additional days a week. So that was, that was great that we were able to, to, uh, work that out and, uh, at least maintain it to the level of our, of our income. Uh, one thing that was right off the bat that we faced this year was utility increases. Fortunately, natural gas is flat this year. There won't be any increase, but we're, we're going to be hit with a four percent increase in, in Edison as well as a six percent increase in, in water costs to us. So before we even had started making cost, we were already in the hole, uh, you know, uh, right there, uh, for those increases because we couldn't add those to it and then make our decreases. We're decreasing off the last year's budget that didn't have these increases in it. Uh, with the eight percent, we're, we're looking at, um, we have two full-time positions that were vacated over this past year that won't be filled as well as we're probably going to, would lose another five part timers. Uh, some of the effects of the eight percent reduction would be in recreation, all the marketing would be eliminated. We would, any maintenance would be, a major maintenance would be deferred. Sixty percent reduction in the program supplies. Uh, our spring egg hunt, which is coming up this next weekend, um, will prob- will probably be eliminated unless we get a donation like we did this year to pay for all the supplies and, and for the eggs and, and all the candy. And that was, the bearers were able to, um, kick in money this year, which kept that egg going. Um, parks, we'll see a reduction in water and fertilizer, herbicides, pesticides, uh, resulting in more adverse turf conditions. Probably have reduction in playground inspections, which would may close, uh, result in closure of some of the, the play apparatus. Again, deferred maintenance. Um, facilities, there will be no weekend coverage. It will be on-call only. And as, as I mentioned before, the, the reduction in the library. If we have to go to twenty-nine percent reduction, we're starting to see some, uh, what I would call almost doomsday effect here. We'd have to close down the Pebble Beach Racquetball and Pool. And as a matter of fact, I'm going to need direction here real quick on what we want to do because if we want to open the pool up this season, we need to know within the next, by, by the end of this week because, um, human resources has to start the process, hiring all the lifeguards and all the aquatics people to go with it, you know, to, in process. We have to get them in place to be able to open up by and train before Memorial Day weekend. We're also looking at the closure of the Westland Sports Center and Activity Center. The Hook Recreation Office will be closed on Fridays. Um, elimination of the mobile recreation program, elimination of the Pee-wee and team basketball. We're looking at, uh, in parks, possible closure of seven parks in order to be able to, to match the, to get the twenty-nine percent. One possibility would be to oversee all our parks for Bermuda grass, which will then go dormant during the winter. It won't require all the maintenance, uh, that, uh, goes on now with the pesky on the ryegrass. But then you have the offset, actually, you know, the, the discoloration as well as the, the, um, the ground, you know, right now with, with the rye and the pesky, you got, you got a pretty good, uh, coverage on it with Bermuda. You get a little bit harder surface, but that's really no different than the infield, the, the infields that are in there now that the soccer and football teams have to play with when they use those fields. Um, see facility-wise, yeah, other than what we mentioned, the closure of those, um, Pebble Beach as well as West Winds, there would be no nighttime tennis because there would be no staff onboard in order to, to turn on the lights and to collect the money for the lights over at, um, Doris Davies Park for, for the tennis courts. And, and the big thing that we have to worry about is going to be the, the, uh, graffiti, the break-ins, uh, the vandalism that's going to occur. Um, if even with, with the pool, if, if we shut it down and we don't use it, if you drain it, then you have the possibility of groundwater popping it out of the ground and damaging everything. And then you have hundreds of thousands of dollars of repairs to, to get it back into shape if we, if we ever, uh, decide to do that again. Even with it just sitting, uh, then you're going to have the rot on the equipment, all the, all the, uh, the gaskets, um, hoses, anything that go with that. And actually they, they all will need to be replaced. And, but if you have it, keep the water in it and try to maintain it in some semblance of, with the chemicals, now you've got an attractive nuisance there and again, people during the summertime, they're going to, they want to hop the fence and, and get in there and, and use it. So, uh, that's, that's where we have problems there. So that's, um, something that the, the council needs to consider and, and see which way we, we want to go in, in direction here because, um, well, just to put us back, like, like Mr. Rubb had mentioned, probably back to the ninety-five, ninety-six level when, when I came onboard here. And yet we probably have added forty-five acres of park and we've probably doubled the number of square feet of facilities in that time. And we're reverting back to the same dollar amount though. Any questions?
Any difference in draining the pool? Kind of chemicalizing it? I mean, I'm thinking in terms of preserving.
Yeah, there's, there's still going to be some cost with, with maintaining the pool because you have, for, you're, you're trying to circulate it. You don't want to have it just sitting there and stagnating because then, then you get, you get damage to your equipment. But we, we do have different levels that we could, could, um, with this twenty-nine percent reduction, what we're looking at is trying to maintain it as minimumly as possible for the minimal amount of chemicals, the minimal amount of cleaning.
There, there's, if we let the water in and ma- and maintain the maintenance on it, uh, in terms of that, but no, no programs.
Right.
There is a savings in that aspect, right?
There is a slight bit. There's not, the cost, the cost of the programs pays, they pay for themselves. They're, they're real close to breaking even for the, to be open it on Memorial Day weekend and we run till Labor Day weekend. What we bring in for that pretty well covers the cost of the recreation staff, you know, lifeguards, you know, the supervisors and all that to maintain it. But there is the yearly cost though of keeping the pool going, the cost of the electricity and the gas, the water costs, all those things associated with it. So there's probably about thirty thousand dollar delta there. And we would be able to, we would be able to, um, lower that maybe to about twenty thousand i- i- to lower the service level on that.
And we don't heat that pool during the winter, do we?
No, we do not. No, we have solar heating, yeah. But we do not, we do not, um, run that even during, during the wintertime. The only time we did was when, in Granite Hills High School was using it before they, they had a pool put in in Apple Valley and they have a water pool and swimming teams, and so they had to use ours and they paid for it all though.
What do you think of the possibilities of, um, volunteers or, um, other community contributions help to sustain some of these programs?
That's a possibility. I mean, we, we have a great volunteerism over at the library. That's why we've been able to keep the library going, um, as well as we have because not only friends of the library, but we have a gr- great group of volunteers that work there. Uh, but, and you can do that. You, you, you've got to be careful though when it comes to operating equipment. You've got the liability issues, um, you know, Chuck, the kid probably attacked their turn.
And the children, and we've got to, we've got to do proper screening of volunteers.
Right, right. And, yeah, and when you're, when you're around the children, you, you, you can't use the auxiliary labor. Um, you know, you're, we're talking the weekend workers, any of those, you can't, you can't have them around children. So.
For the council's benefit, uh, we asked John to take a hard look we have for the last couple of years at any adult recreation programs that they actually in fact a hundred percent pay for themselves. Um, because we don't want to touch that.
The others have been eliminated.
Adult recreation. The aquatics is, is mostly, uh, kids' recreation. And as he, as he said, it, it for the most part pays for itself except for the pool maintenance aspect of it. Um, we did just, uh, earlier this week, or just late last week actually, taking a look at that budget, if we were going to try to keep the pools open and have aquatics pick up not just the recreation side, but also the, the care and maintenance of the pools, it would increase our, our cost, uh, of the aquatics by probably about sixty percent or so. If you were to just sort of across the board, sixty percent higher for, for lessons and for, for daytime swimming pool use. Um, it could then pick up both the cost of, of the recreation staff, but also the pool maintenance as well.
Well, we, we did do a survey of all of the neighboring communities and our cost is exactly in line with the recreation swim. And our, our lessons are the same as, uh, two of these, as other entities and I believe a little bit above one of the others. And the pool rental is right in the middle. One, one entity has a higher rate and one entity has a lower rate. So we're right there. Um, so if we do that, then we're going to start pricing ourselves out of it and then, then it's cause and effect.
Thank you, John.
Whatever we do, the main thing I think is that we have to preserve the integrity of that swimming pool and the equipment there. I mean, however we revise or do our, our managing this, whether this gets through a year or two or whatever, but what seems to me that the most critical thing to decide is to maintain the quality of that pool structure. Now, if we can do it by using it, that's great. If we shut it down, there still has to be an aspect of, of, of expense to that that maintains that swimming pool so that the next year, a year goes by or, or more, uh, that we can resurrect it with minimal expenses and we have that asset still in place. So I'm, from my main mindset, I want to make sure that whatever decision we make, that we don't jeopardize that footprint.
What's tricky with the swimming is the fact that it overlaps the fiscal years. So we've spent everything since last Labor Day in this fiscal year maintaining it. And it opens, would normally open, you know, towards the, in the end of May and be open for June, which would be this fiscal year. And then you'd only have two months of next fiscal year. So we would, there would be, there would be a loss of revenue this year because of the fact that we wouldn't have it open, yet we've, we've spent, you know, eight, nine months maintaining it, getting and keeping it ready to go. So that's, that's a decision that, um, we'll leave to the council on which direction you'd like us to go. Thank you.
Uh, we've been focused on the general fund. We have one department head left who, uh, doesn't have any general fund departments anymore. Uh, Keith Metzler from, uh, RDA and, uh, and Airport. Keith, if you want to come up and, and just give a, a brief overview of, of RDA, SCLAA, um, and also Airport. Airport used to be part of the discussion for the general fund, but since Keith has, uh, taken that over under his wing as, uh, as a department head, uh, the Airport Department as a whole has actually started to, uh, have revenues over expenditures for the first time, uh, two years ago and then again this year and, uh, and into the future it appears. So, Keith?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Uh, I am pleased to be presenting, uh, the Department of Economic Development budget. Um, uh, it's getting, uh, getting tighter and tighter every year. And, uh, though we're not relying on general fund, uh, to help us through. we're not relying on general fund, uh, to help us through our operational needs, um, a very significant portion of our department budget does rely on tax increment, which is property tax-based. And, um, we've seen as much as a forty percent decline in our tax increment base, uh, over the last few years, uh, which is to mean, uh, we prioritize things like debt service, and we deprioritize things like discretionary capital improvements that are of benefit to the project area. Um, maybe to help give some overview, um, the department is funded largely comprising enterprises. Uh, you have the airport as an enterprise that has its own abilities to generate its own revenues. Um, you also have a redevelopment agency, which operates as a separate legal entity, uh, just as the airport. It has its own separate, uh, revenues and expenditures. We also administer, uh, CDBG, uh, and, um, home-related grants. And, uh, those combined comprise the department. We, uh, work very diligently to budget and manage our funds separate from the city. In fact, we, uh, regularly, um, develop cash flow models, and one thing that is going to be a highlight of this year, uh, and, and to relieve some strain and pressure on the cash flow needs of the city, because there are existing, uh, fund balances in various redevelopment accounts, uh, we're also looking this year to cash flow the entire department operations' needs, uh, out of redevelopment fund soils, to not have to dip into, uh, a city fund, per se. Um, but starting, um, to break down how we look at the budget, we first start with Southern California Logistics Airport operations, and have to be clear about operations at SCLA, because there's a lot of, it's easy to confuse the number of different budgets, uh, that comprise how we do things. But we first have set it up, uh, even in the accounting office, to look at SCLA operations as a singular operation for the activities that occur on, uh, on the airport grounds. And we actually have operating restrictions and requirements by the FAA, that for all revenues generated on the airport, those expenditures have to be made back on the airport. Uh, so there's some very strong restrictions, and despite what the fiscal audit for the airport authority says with respect to the substantial negative, um, uh, in, in the way it does business, that's actually a, a combined reflection for the authority. That's not a true reflection for the actual airport operations. So, since the Department of Economic Development has actually been overseeing the operations of SCLA, um, we have, uh, this is our third fiscal budget that we're working with, we've had two good years now of operating, and the first year that we did operate, nine, ten, became pretty darn close to breaking even on the operations. This current fiscal year, we're actually projecting to have a positive net income, which means you'll have revenues in excess of expenditures, and for the upcoming fiscal year, uh, we are projecting, again, a positive net income, which is to the tune of about a million dollars is what we're expecting. Um, uh, those monies would then be used to fund either capital improvements, uh, of the airport, or, uh, to the extent we can identify that there were past debts that benefit directly on airport, uh, through accounting, then we can decide, uh, how to principally reduce some, some prior obligations. But probably the most noteworthy is the fact that your airport operation is cash-positive, um, today, um, and is proposed to do so next year, um, which is to mean it doesn't, uh, rely on, uh, any city assistance to run the day-to-day operations out there. I will tell you that a lot of that has to do with the management. Um, we have gone in and looked at the operations out there. We have, uh, managed a number of cuts, not just in terms of discretionary expenditures, and being a lot more strict in managing the expenditure, expenditure side of the equation. We've looked very closely at where the physical needs for human resources are at the airport, and through attrition, uh, from the administrative support side of things, uh, we've actually backfilled in the positions that we have out there, and, and putting people where they need to be in, that's actually maintaining the infrastructure. So our admin support side is very, very lean, uh, and even more so, it's, it's gotten lean largely because we've been able to share, uh, human resources from the department operations here at City Hall. So the SCLA operations, I do believe, um, is, is a highlight currently, because we've got those day-to-days turning around. Collections is another example of how we've been able to accelerate our receipt of cash, and actually, collectability of cash, so that we can, uh, manage the day-to-day. We've also separated out, uh, and, and new to the budget for this fiscal year is a small budget for what we call off-airport operations. It's typically the parcels that we call B and D. There are some, uh, very few revenue-generating, um, assets that we have, uh, that we still own as the authority, that have not been disposed sterling, um, for which we actually collect revenues for, and then, of course, have maintenance responsibilities. Uh, our budget for that B and D is effectively to balance our revenues and expenditures, so that there isn't a, uh, net expense, uh, to the airport. The one that gets highlighted the most, we've separated out, is SCLA bonds. And as disclosed in our last, uh, public disclosure report, um, we've identified that tax increment, because of the substantial decline in property tax valuation due to the economy, uh, we do show that our bonded indebtedness is greater than our tax increment revenues. The highlight there, and it will show in the budget as a deficit, the highlight there is that we will be looking at, uh, cash flowing, uh, debt service from interfund lending of redevelopment agency funds, not city funds. Uh, so we'll actually be looking at going, uh, over the course of the year, um, an interfund loan from, uh, various project areas. And then, of course, you have the redevelopment agency itself, and the four redevelopment project areas it manages, we've pared down very substantially, uh, the capital improvements that go into those, um, into those, into those projects. And then CDBG Home, we've, um, projected about a sixteen percent decrease in the grants that are becoming available to us from HUD. Um, overall, the department, we've, um, attempted to be extremely lean over the course of the last couple of years. We've evolved from forty-one full-time employees to what we're actually proposing in the upcoming fiscal budget, which is twenty-seven full-time equivalents. Um, with the reduction in personnel, um, I feel confident saying we haven't really seen a reduction in the level of service. Um, I have a good team, a good group of people, they're taking on a lot more work, uh, and I will say that I believe currently we're getting more out of the streamlined, uh, team that we have than, than we had, uh, previously, uh, with the inherited, uh, structure. Uh, so with that, that is kind of the general overview that I had, uh, for you, unless you have any specific questions or comments.
You, you indicated the bonding level, our revenue from the assessed valuation of our property tax is still slightly less than what we need to pay for the bonding?
For the, for the bonds that have been issued by the airport authority, those are the ones that we've identified, um, not meeting, uh, debt service.
How low are we, I mean, how low are we for breaking even? Is it close, or?
I'm ge- I'm believing point eight-three was our last debt service coverage ratio, so, um-
Less than a percent?
What's that?
Less than a percent?
Well, meeting debt service is one, and, and we're at point eight-three, so we're effectively seventeen points-
Oh, okay.
-short of, of meeting, uh, debt service. So, it's going to take a fairly meaningful, uh, correction in the assessed valuation rolls, um, not which we're projecting for this current, for the upcoming fiscal year. Um, applying that just to redevelopment overall, we've, we've actually been looking at making some dramatic cuts, even on the, uh, administrative side, um, believing that we probably are going to have to start making cuts now to avoid, um, um, that, uh, expanded shortfall in future years by, by, uh, continued decline in revenues.
Wouldn't hurt to have a three-hundred-million-dollar project up and running, uh-
Well, certainly those help. I mean, when you have projects, uh, like Dr. Pepper, that can infuse a hundred-and-twenty million dollars of new AV in the roll, you know, to the extent we can get more of those, those substantially help. Uh, the unfortunate thing, when you look at the SCL, uh, at the, at the, um, Victorville portion of the Vida project area, is when you look at the demographic makeup of, of secured properties on the roll, about sixty percent of them are residentially based. So you have a, a, a very high concentration that's relying on, uh, the single-family homes, uh, even the multifamilies, but largely the single families, and those are taking the most, uh, dramatic of, uh, correction on the AV rolls.
Keith, I was thinking that the latest, uh, disclosure was a point eight-seven, so we'll take a look, just to make sure that, we haven't had another one, uh, that, that lowered it further, but, uh, I don't recall exactly. I was thinking it was point eight-seven.
I'm going off my head.
He said point three, but, uh, it was a couple of months ago, I know. So we'll, we'll make sure that, that, uh, which one of those numbers is, is, is absolutely accurate, so. I mean, what, anybody watching online, or, or looking at this later, thinking that we've had a further reduction, that's only, that's essentially an annual event, so whatever it was, is, is what it is.
I, I believe you're correct, we reported point eight-seven.
Um, that really concludes all of the presentations.
Just, just to clarify a point, and, and I think it's important to bring it up, because it came out in the, uh, in the SCLA audit, and it came out in the city audit, that the airport lost forty-nine million dollars last year. Um, and on its, on its face, that's exactly what happened, but what we both know is that that was a result of writing off that fifty-million-dollar deposit to GE. And that hit, it's been carried as an asset for some two, two, three, four years, and this year, when they settled the GE litigation, that deposit got charged to expense, so it created this appearance of a monstrous loss at the base. The fact is, on the, on the cash basis, that the airport generated about a million-dollar positive flow this year, all right?
That, that's, that's where we're at, and one of the things that we are working on with the finance department, is just a matter of getting there, in, in terms of the, the priority pecking order. I don't personally like how the, the, um, audits are drafted, as they represent a collective representation of all the airport authority's activities, and I would actually characterize the audit as just that, it's, it's an audit of the airport authority, and it comprises, it summarizes for you a combination of things like debt service, operating activities of the airport, uh, there's a third one in there, I, I can't remember off the top of my head, but the point is, the representation, when you look at that big negative number, is collective of the airport authority, and if I was the FAA coming in saying, hey, show me your books, because I'm really interested in seeing how the airport is doing, because that's what they care about, and that's what they're there to assure, that the money's generated from the airport is spent on the airport, your audit wouldn't necessarily reflect that, uh, to the, to the truest representation. So, we're actually working for, we've had meetings already, uh, I think we're on the same page, but getting that separated out, so you can clearly see the difference between capital accounts, such as, uh, bonded indebtedness versus, uh, operations, which is revenues from leases and fuel flowage fees and things like that.
That essentially concludes all the presentations from department heads, and, and for myself, I would draw your attention back to page two of your handout. Those four items are really the bare minimum of the, uh, the priorities and direction we'd, we'd like to get out of this meeting. Um, certainly, we welcome additional, uh, priorities, uh, additional ideas. Um, we didn't provide you with, uh, a lot of good options today for you to choose from. Uh, we recognize that it's a, a, a lot of, uh, bad options, uh, some worse than others, and, uh, recognize that it's an extremely difficult situation to be in, uh, but, uh, your staff will continue to, to do our very best to, to get the city back on track financially, and to get us to a balanced budget, uh, either this year, or over the next two years, if, if that's your direction. Uh, following any potential, uh, last minute, or, or final comments from Mr. Cox, I'll turn it back to the mayor.
Just a few comments, Mr., excuse me, Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh, for a couple of years now, we have recognized that this recession has affected far more than the city of Victorville, and anyone who reads the newspapers and watches the news knows that, uh, the cities, counties, states that'll, are impacted financially. Um, actually, the projections are that we, we are finan- we are impacted a lot more. I don't know that, uh, in talking with managers from other cities, it seems like that most of the cities in San Bernardino County are, are having a major problem. Uh, we made a commitment from the staff point of view, to work with the city council, uh, to try not to cut services if we possibly could reserve those, and ask the employees to step up to the plate, uh, not to go back over all of the cuts in salaries and benefits over the last couple of years, but the employees have made that sacrifice, we have made it work. Uh, I, I know that if there's a reduction in services, the council are going to be the first to find a defense, you're going to get the calls, and based upon what's been relayed to me, um, you have not experienced major reduction in services, uh, not even a medium reduction in services, which means that the employees are, are stepping up and, and doing what's expected, and even more, and I appreciate that. Um, we believe, at this point in time, that obviously we have more work to do, we had to take the, what we considered least and worst measures, and that's where you got your eight, twenty-nine percent, we had to make an assumption that, um, police and fire would be as cooperative as they possibly could, and they have done, and we appreciate that. Uh, but the policy of the city council adopted two years ago, restated a year ago, and probably restated mid-year was that there's not going to be a reduction in police and fire, uh, the reduction in services has been assured, there has been reductions in cost, but they have the assurances of being, uh, that they haven't reduced the services, and they're still looking at those issues, and actually, they're still negotiating with employees until we get the final figure. We won't know exactly, uh, what the cost is, but we do expect a, a increase in cost in the sheriff's, um, contract at this time, and that's been, that's been given to you. That budget priority, I'm, I'm not going to guess what the council is going to do, but we place it there for the council to see what could occur, and with, with not really an expectation of reducing police and fire. Uh, the cost leading adjustment is something that is awfully hard to discuss when you have, uh, employees that you're going to lay off, but on the other hand, we reached a point where, you know, you have employees that have stepped up, they're working as hard as they can, and they have, uh, reduced, uh, benefits and salaries, and it's something to consider. The, uh, the cost-of-board cuts are not always possible, it is the fairest way to approach it, but we know that there are some times that you simply cannot cut for, for various reasons. And, uh, we know that, uh, we do have a current, uh, surplus, not a surplus, but we have the reserves, and, uh, we know that we're going to have to continue to watch income expenditures on a month-to-month basis, we're going to continue to look for ways to, uh, cut, we're going to, uh, look at all of the data that we can possibly get, the, the sales tax appears to have hit bottom, and is coming back, property tax is level, we expect it to come up some, and we're going to be conservative in our estimate of what it's going to increase. Uh, but, um, we believe that we have to make the cuts that have been proposed for the eight percent, we don't think there's any way around that, and we're preparing reorganizations, assuming council's in agreement, and, and doesn't, disagree with those. We know there's a lot of questions, we know there's going to be more meetings, and we know in between those meetings, there's going to be a lot of questions from council back to staff, uh, to answer individual questions that's going to arise as a result of this presentation today, and we will, we will collectively, from all the departments, provide those answers back to the city council, and the next, uh, meeting that we have on the budget, we'll, we'll have the more, those figures will, will be more refined, and we will make the determination of our incomes a little better. We will know, for example, if we have an agreement with Mason and Squawley interchange at that time, we will know how that ten million dollars will be affected. And that does not diminish our efforts to continue to try to get grants wherever we can, whether it's graffiti, gang and task force, or drugs and, uh, gang task force. Uh, every time we get a grant, even though they may be specific and pointed, it reduces, uh, the amount of expenditure that we have to provide, unless they are matching dollars, and as we had said before, that maybe, it may be that we get a grant and have to turn it down because of our matching contributions, but we will continue to look at those. Um, I have nothing other to add at this time, unless there are questions from the council.
I have a question. Um, on the city attorney, it sounds that, uh, it's budgeted five hundred thousand? I am not understanding why, why we come up with those projected budget amounts when we know historically those numbers are not correct, and why didn't the city attorney give us a presentation?
Uh, in this year's budget, that five hundred thousand was based on, uh, dramatic reduction in the need for attorney services, because of, uh, just simply reduced workload, uh, from development, from, from other departments, from, uh, contract work. Uh, we had just wrapped up, uh, the GE, uh, potential lawsuit issue, we had just wrapped up, uh, uh, settled a lawsuit with, uh, CMV, uh, and there was no, uh, major litigation on the horizon, uh, for this fiscal year. Um, immediately after passing the budget, um, we got into an increased workload from the, uh, the grand jury and forensic auditor, and then followed up by an increased workload due to the SEC inquiry. Um, we are anticipating that those are, at least, uh, for the most part, coming to a close for the city. We don't know if, if they're going to be done, but we believe that much of that information gathering that they had to do is, 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 is done. Um, so we're hopeful that we can get back to that, to that estimate. Um- So we're hopeful that we can get back to that estimate. We have not done a complete analysis as to what each of those two major issues have cost us, and we actually are planning to do that over the next couple of weeks just to make sure that that is a good number or not.
In addition, the straight council placed on the dais today is a cost of what the city has paid in legal fees. We've anticipated that this is an ongoing discussion with the city council. There have been several references of expenditures, or I mean, what it has cost the city for legal expenses for the past five years. And we have put together information that indicates, starting in 2004, '05 through current '10, '11, and this is all the law firms that have worked on different projects. Total amount that's paid to the firms, and then we've highlighted in yellow if that constitutes a part of a judgment or supplemental payment for the lawsuit. These lawsuits, for example, in the Gibbs-Gilden-Lawker and Turner, that's Carter-Bridge's lawsuit, I think it's been reported that we have won in excess of fifty-one million plus legal fees. The legal fees that are shown on about the third page of this, of two million seven hundred and forty-nine thousand, of which in the year 2010-'11 to that law firm alone is a million nine hundred and twenty-two thousand. We expect that to get reimbursed. We also have other lawsuits where we have paid to settle the part of the lawsuit because we've paid to the firm. And we would hope that with the settlement of these, including and recognizing the additional cost and substantial cost that we have incurred as a result of the various investigations, that this will, we hope it will substantially drop. And then this information is just provided to the council, so all the council can have data on what we have been extending and what they're willing to stand, what they want to stand, the need, the discussion is between the council and the attorney in regard to what we extend on the different things that arise. We could not stop being represented regarding the grand jury lawsuit, the EB5, which is costing us a substantial amount of money, and we are using specialist attorneys and so on. If you will note, starting in fiscal year 2004 on the last page, the total of fees paid reached a height, a high of in 2008-'09 of three million, and then '09-'10, three million twenty-five thousand. Fiscal year '10-'11, it's down to one million five. It's certainly my goal as the city manager, providing that we don't have any other investigations and outside lawsuits totally unanticipated, that we continue dropping this amount, and that it will be reduced substantially this year.
In addition, if I might, Mr. Cox, I think the other area, in addition to the grand jury and the SEC that's going to reduce significantly is the La Mesa and Nisqually. A lot of our time has been in wrapping up the land acquisition, land assembly on Nisqually, La Mesa, depending on if that's taken over by Sandback. But even if it's not, that is near incompletion in terms of our role with respect to that project. So there's going to be a dramatic reduction with respect to that project itself.
And the reason we didn't have a presentation from either the city attorney or the contract risk managers is because although in some regards you treat them as department heads as sorts, they don't manage their own budget, city budget that's managed by city staff. So between Mr. Cox and myself, we manage those budgets as best we can. However, both of them simply do the work that they're asked to do by the city council and by city management.
So if, so you're saying that you think that the grand jury is wrapping up and our expenses for legal fees are going to go down, but what if council people get indicted? Who's going to represent them? Is that the city that represents them?
I think that's a matter between the council and the city council to discuss that. I think there's been explained before that the city council people are acting within their capacity, that the city attorney, or the city attorney, the city is required to provide them legal defense. If they have acted outside of that capacity, they could be individually liable. None of that has been looked at at this point in time because we have, at this time, in my involvement with SEC, grand jury, and other agencies, I have had no one suggest that any crime has been committed. And thus, at this time, we have to wait until those are finished, until we make a determination of what, if anything, it would cost the city for legal fees.
And regarding the police department, I have a couple of questions.
What was the question?
If, how many positions do you have down to include sick and disability as well as the vacant positions? Are you down?
Currently, three deputy sheriffs that are off, one detective, a clerk, and that's all that's off completely.
And then plus the eight that are out already?
Seven deputies and one SSS.
So thirteen total?
Yeah, and they come and go. They could change tomorrow. They could have one or two come back to work. Somebody could get injured today. So that's kind of in flux all the time. But the seven are confirmed, and that's, those are actual vacancies. But forty-eight fifties can come and go.
Would the sheriff's department consider not having a captain's position and maybe getting with that captain's position instead of a captain's position, a couple more deputies?
What I'd like to do is kind of frame this discussion that has occurred here today. It looks like there's still a lot of unknowns, and in fact, some of those I would like to share in a minute. But just to give you, from my perspective, on your four issues, use of reserves, definitely. You ought to use reserves if necessary. Budget priorities, police and fire, I don't want to see any cuts to those. I think we have great partners in our sheriff's department and county fire, and I think that it's amazing to see what you all have already done to cut the cost to this city without cutting the service. So I applaud you on that. Cost of living adjustments, I'd ask you to hold off on that, and across-the-board cuts, I'd ask you to hold off on that. A couple of things. Obviously, we are actively entertaining unsolicited proposals on our wastewater treatment facility from everybody that seems to want to own a wastewater treatment plant these days. You would imagine, or it would be hard for you to understand, the number of people that have contacted me saying they want to buy a wastewater treatment facility. I don't know why, but apparently that there's some interest in that, and that does include our regional wastewater facility, VVWR. So I've asked that any and all interested parties submit proposals by the end of April. I think that there's some potential for money to come back into the city if we unload that project that we built. Obviously, I don't think that the council that approved that wanted to see that happen, but that's on the table, and we need to actively continue to consider that. I've brought up, you know, selling off assets, and since then, apparently, we've found out that we can't sell certain assets. But I would still like to see a report from our city manager or deputy city manager on what the city owns in water rights and what we could possibly potentially sell and lease back there if we needed to. I've received some interest on that asset, and that could potentially provide the city with some money in the interim to get us through this tough economic time. But I think there's just too many unknowns that still need to be addressed. I would encourage staff to schedule another workshop around this same time next month. By then, I think a lot of these things, we may have some sort of answer to. We can get additional information. Perhaps in that time, staff sees revenues coming in that will allow it to reduce the overall deficit. But a couple of questions I would have for staff to look at for the next budget workshop, two things. I feel like I'm a broken record here. Every time I ask you to look at outsourcing maintenance of parks, and this is something that's been discussed openly, and it never seems to have been addressed, and I'd like to see that addressed. Maintenance of any city facilities for that matter, if there is the potential for us to outsource that, for any city employees to be hired by firms that would, that we'd be outsourcing to, like, much like what we did with the golf courses, we ought to consider that. And I would, I'd like to see some sort of report, some sort of, you know, information to this council on the ability to be able to do that at our next budget workshop. Excuse me, I went off on a tangent there on outsourcing, but there's something else, but it's left my mind. So I'm open to other council member comments, but I just think there's too much stuff that's unknown at this time, and you've heard my issues at least on those four areas of direction that you're speaking.
Just a couple of comments. My personal opinion is that we should not budget next year to use that last small amount of reserves that we have left. I think that just delays and postpones an inevitable decision next year. I think we need to anticipate the worst. Frankly, I'm very positive about the future. I'm an optimist, but I'm not very sure about next year. So I would like to suggest that we budget to break even next year. I have no appetite to cut police and fire, or for that matter, graffiti. I'm just not willing to let graffiti take over the city. But that's only one of a bunch of things I'd like to not cut. At the risk of, at the risk of being almost trivial in a gesture, I will say this: I see absolutely no reason for me to be compensated to do this job. In fact, I'm not going to accept any more compensation as a council member. And I think if five of us adopted that attitude, we might save two twenty-five thousand dollars of positions. That is absolutely the least we can do. But I really think we've got to budget for the worst possible outcomes next year, not building on hope and optimism.
I agree with Kennedy, or Councilman Kennedy, in regards to the priority as far as police and fire. And then also with the, maybe looking at sourcing on some of these things. But you have to be careful. For example, public works plays a major role in emergencies for the city of Victorville, and I certainly would not, would not look favorably on outsourcing that responsibility to some contractor, some private contractor. As far as the wages or salaries, I'm with him. I'm willing to do that, and finance can just do it automatically by next paycheck.
I'm not there yet on how much I want to cut for the safety aspects of this thing, whether it's the eight percent or the thirty percent. But thirty percent, I'm concerned about the dramatic impacts on such places as the public works department, others where there's no more room to wiggle down to that level and still have a functional, safe, operating department, and also the one that deals with the unexpected disasters and things that occurred throughout the year. So the thirty percent to me is a stretch. I'm having trouble with that. I'm hoping that maybe that the eight percent, if that's just a measuring stick all by itself, and there's departments you can cut more, there's departments that you can't cut more, you might only have five percent more cut that you could have, worst-case scenario. We need to do that wiggle room. Now, we did the cross-the-board cuts for the last two years, and it was dramatic. I mean, I don't know how many cities have cut as many as employees as we have done, but the amount of employees that we had two years ago, or two and a half years ago, and today is well under, the cut is in forty percent range. That is cuts to this city in this aspect, and we maintain the one principal thing that I've marched on all my life on this council, police, fire, and streets. Those are the three things I think a city functions for. That doesn't mean that I'm not prepared to suggest some cuts in the fire and the police yet, but I think that we need to look at that a bit. But at the moment, the thirty percent is my stretch, and the eight percent is something that maybe we need to wiggle that string around a bit and find some places where we can take some more, and some places we can take less. If the, you know, if the fire department, if the police department can take a five percent cut versus the eight percent cut, if the fire department can take a five percent cut versus what they've done. And I admit, both, I'm impressed with both presentations from our fire chief and our police chief, that those things that you have done to save us money are not small issues. They are dramatic issues that have gotten us to this point in the year without struggling as hard as we had. So I'm not ready to say that I would oppose an eight percent cut, but I'm wondering if there isn't some wiggle room on that eight percent line that we can't ask some from the safety department and police and fire, and then maybe some of the other departments a little bit more. I just can't see the saying thirty percent all the way across the board and taking another whack at our city because I think there's over-the-counter stuff that just almost comes to a stop. And it's like preserving the swimming pool issue. You can't just drain the pool and let it stay empty for a year and then expect a year later to come back and see it. You almost have a hundred thousand dollars thrown back into the pot just to resurrect a service that people will definitely want and deserve when the economy comes around. So we've got to preserve assets. Same as out at the airport for SCLA out there. We've got real estate out there for a billion-dollar power plant that would, when they get that thing up, whether it's piecemeal, whether we do a three-hundred-million-dollar solar component, which would add three million dollars a year into the revenue stream, or a billion-dollar plant, which would put ten million dollars a year into the local revenue stream. And I don't mean just the city. I mean schools, water districts, everything, that whole aspect. We can't destroy that platform and look to the future with any way of seeing us getting out of this quagmire. We can get out of quagmire a lot faster than any other community in Southern California. We're in great position right now. We've come through two big dramatic issues that we've dealt with and are behind us at this moment as we sit here. So now we're looking at that little fine line of getting a year down the road, and there's a lot of unknown questions still, a month from now, two months from now, six months from now, that could change the equation. I'm open to selling the sewer plant. I mean, it's not, it's one of those issues that I definitely would not want to sell because I think it's one of those issues that speaks to our flexibility to deal and attract business out at SCLA. And that is an issue. SCLA, yes, it's under the management of these five council members, but it's an asset that a half a million people look to for the future, and it's an incredible asset. I say in spite of California, not because of California, we've got that out there. So as we look to some of these things that we need to do, I don't want to destroy that future that's out there. I don't think we have to do that. I think we're close enough now that that's not going to be the case. But certainly, there's some big-ticket items that we still have to answer to. So like I say, I'm not prepared to accept the twenty-nine percent across-the-board cut for everybody else, and not safety. And I'm not prepared to say that we have to do the eight percent across-the-board for the sheriff and the fire either. But I am going to ask that, for my one vote on the council, that both the fire and the police department look at that difference a bit and see if there is some more wiggle room that we can find in there and to bring that down so that it's not such a heavy burden on the rest of the city as great as the job is done. That would be my request.
I definitely don't agree with any cuts to public safety, police or fire. I'm really struggling with the city attorney. The fees that we have paid this individual for the level of work that we've received that has brought and destroyed the city council. It's a simple fix, and that fix is that if you have competent management, all the rest will fix itself. But instead, we have staff rec after staff rec, financial statements that are inaccurate. I have asked for information, just like today. We get all this information as I walk on the dais, when I've been asking for it for months. Don't get it. And that's what happens with the city council. Historically, we get it crammed down our throat, and that's probably why they've made disastrous decisions, financial decisions for the city. And I don't think there should be any layoffs, any cuts, until we deal with the city attorney. If we had a competent city attorney, we wouldn't be in so many lawsuits. We wouldn't have the problems that we have. And the agendas that would come forward would be accurate, good agendas. Otherwise, it would get kicked back at the city attorney level. That's the way it is at VVWR. I would imagine it should be this way here. I would imagine it should be this way here. I'm a little bit confused, Ryan, regarding your outsourcing maintenance. If we were to outsource maintenance, wouldn't that cause layoffs?
Well, like we did with the golf courses, many of those people that worked for the city were hired by the firm that we outsourced to. And that's what I would hope for if we had to outsource maintenance of parks. But, um, you know, I, I just don't know that it's sustainable to, to pay the types of salaries that we're paying to people, you know, to maintain lawns. So it's something that I'm, all I'm asking for is that this council receive information with respect to that. I'm not at the point that that's ought, that be what we ought to do. And in fact, I'm still at the point, until we've dealt with our wastewater treatment plant, I think much of this budget deficit that we're facing is something that can be addressed if we can successfully deal with that. So that's kind of where I'm at on that whole issue.
And, and I think it is very noble of, of Mr. Cabralis to give up his salary since many of his decisions has caused this destruction to the city.
Um, okay, so staff, you have some direction on where we're going and to schedule a future budget workshop. I would imagine that we're going to need one in May and then a final one in June to adopt the budget. Um, the other thing that I remembered that I was going to ask you earlier, that I would ask you to come back at the next budget workshop, is I know that, that no one would ever want to suggest this. And I, and I'm not saying that I am right now. But considering certain circumstances and things that we have in the works, is it possible to budget a, to have an unbalanced budget, a budget deficit going into next year, understanding that there are certain things that still need to be worked out? Some analysis on that and, and some reports and presentations back to the council on could we potentially go into two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, understanding that we have a deficit that will have to be addressed in the next fiscal year? Just for consideration and information back to council.
Okay, just to kind of go over what I believe I've heard today to make sure that, that we come away with all the same understanding. Although no votes were taken, I've been kind of trying to take a few notes on, on what has support, what didn't have support, specifically on the use of reserves. Based on the opinions I heard today, we will budget to use all of those reserves. That actually would have a significant positive impact on that, either the eight percent or the twenty-nine percent potential cuts because it pushes down the need to, to cut as deep. The cuts were based on keeping our existing reserve policy. So we could look at some of the items that, that were mentioned, such as graffiti and other, I believe there's some other code enforcement issues that were mentioned. As, where we would, we would take those cuts away in essence from the, from the twenty-nine percent. Regarding the water rights, Ryan, you and I talked about that briefly a week or so ago, maybe two weeks ago now. And I do have more information on that, that I want to share with the council at a later meeting. And if I get, get it put together before a meeting, I'll, I'll be happy to put it into a memo so that you, you have all of that. The, the short answer to that is that the, when the two water districts were consolidated and came under the purview of the city, all of the water rights from all three agencies were put into the Victorville Water District. So the water rights now belong to the Victorville Water District. That doesn't mean that magically the city should now pay a higher rate for the, to use the water than in fact we put into that, into that organization. So we're going to be taking a look at, at the water rates that we, that we pay now and the water rates that we have paid. I've talked with the Lasco Executive Officer about this. And although the water rights are not something we could get compensated for, certainly, there's no need for effectively the, the people of Victorville to charge themselves to use the water, to water their parks, so mad and, and fields and things. So we, we can realize some savings there for some of the costs that are in our parks and general fund departments. And we're working on, on how much that might be. Regarding selling the sewer plant, that would bring significant cash into the city. But I do need to make you aware that that cash would come into the Wastewater Enterprise Fund, which right now is funded through the Water District. And so in order for that to benefit the general fund, it would necessarily involve some internal borrowing that has been criticized in the past, I'll say, in, in the recent, very recent past. So we would need to have some very specific direction on how much of that inter-fund borrowing you would want us to, to do. And that kind of gets into your, your final question that you remembered, which was can we have an unbalanced budget going into the next, next fiscal year? I think a lot of that has to do with, with a sense that hopefully sometime either next fiscal year or shortly into the following fiscal year, we would realize a, a payment from the Carter and Burgess judgment that we received. The timing of that is, is questionable, anywhere from the next one to two years, maybe even a little bit more than that. So I, I think that was one thing that, that you had talked about earlier. If we know that that's coming and are, and are competent enough, should we budget accordingly and budget to go into the red for a short time, knowing that ultimately that judgment would come and be able to, to dig us back out? Your, your other points that you mentioned, outsourcing parks and other facilities. Unfortunately, when we had this discussion almost a year ago about outsourcing parks and other facilities, we, Mr. Cox and I actually met with all the employees and indicated that it was our intent to, to do a series of RFPs to look at the cost of those things so that when we got to today, that you guys would have, have that information to be able to compare to, to current costs. We unfortunately were overwhelmed with records requests from a combination of sources, hundreds of thousands of pages in records requests went to the SEC. And all of that information, as, as well as hundreds of thousands of more pages, my guess would be we're probably at over a million pages of documentation that have gone to the forensic auditor. The, most of that information was, was, came out of the finance division. And so the staff that would have participated and would have put those RFPs together was simply overwhelmed with other priorities. We will, now that we are, seem to be wrapping that up, at least the, the records requests have, have diminished significantly. We are, we do have the time freed up to, to do those RFPs and we'll get them out as soon as we can.
All right. With that, then the direction is that you'll schedule another budget workshop at some point in this time in May. And hopefully another one in June. Thanks.